Five, this is a regular meeting of the town council. The open meeting law allows us to hold meetings remotely without a quorum of the council present in the room. However, there are in fact 12 of us in the room and one other councillor on Zoom. The meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and is a live broadcast on Amherst Media and a live stream. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the March 24th regular town council meeting to order at 6:31. I'll call upon each councillor by the name that they have indicated they would like to be addressed and ask them to unmute their mic and say "present" and then mute their mic again. Does everybody have a mic? Okay, got it. Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Councillor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Tob.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Okay, there's no chat room. If there's technical issues, we'll deal with it as it arises. And at this time, there is one change in the order of the agenda unless we have to change something later. Immediately upon conclusion of the hearing, which I promise will be brief regarding a poll placement, we are going to move that action item and then we will go back to the rest of the meeting, including public comment. There is a public comment as part of the hearing. Please don't confuse that with general public comment. Okay? Very quickly, some announcements. Various meetings will continue to be held. Our next scheduled town council meeting is April 7th at 6:30. We will have a public forum on appropriations outside the budget at that time. On Tuesday, April 1st, at 4 o'clock, we will be reading the proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. That will be in front of Town Hall. On Saturday, the 5th of April, there is a global village event on the Common from 10 to 5 or 6, I believe. And on Sunday, the 6th, we have the Rubbish Roundup. If you would like to help clean up our town, please make sure you go to the website and find out how to sign up. Okay? We have an EverSource petition. I would like the people from EverSource to come forward. And also Guilford, you're on at this point, right? So, um, let me just mention that there's a process for hearings and we'll be going through that process. So first of all is the petitioner's presentation. So would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Ryan Morich. I'm representing EverSource for the poll petition today for the JCA over at 742 Main Street in Amherst.
Okay. Can you, is the green light on?
Yes, I might.
Okay.
I just wasn't close.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Guilford, would you like to comment? Alicia, you have your hand up.
Uh, sorry, I put that up earlier because I was wondering, I had a question about the order of the agenda. And I know we are going to have action on this item later, but is there any reason we can't have the presentation also after public comment?
The presentation is brief. We're going to take action immediately after it and then we will move to public comment. That was in the order of items I sent out to all councillors back on Friday.
I do understand and I did see that, but just considering the amount of families and people with children who wanted to public comment tonight, I was seeing if there was any way we could have public comment first.
I'm sorry.
The hearing was noticed for a specific time.
Thank you. The hearing was actually noticed for a time specific and so that's when we have to hold the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. So the petition is for the polls as you see them on this map on Main Street. Is there anything else you would like to say about it at this time?
So it's for one midspan poll between two existing polls. If you go to the next page, I kind of drew what it would look like in between those two existing polls. It's, it's the same size as the other polls. It's to bring power to the back of the JCA building for their solar project and to feed the service for their, for their building.
Great, thank you. Guilford, did you have anything you want to add?
Only that the Pillow Works Department recommends approval. Because of the way the polls are set up, you have to have a midspan poll here. There's no room on the existing two polls to put the new service for the solar facility. So you do need a new poll. There are no utilities in the way of this poll. It'll be, and there are no trees that need to be trimmed.
Are there any people in the audience who have a question, a comment regarding this item? Either on Zoom or in person? Seeing none. Are there councillors with questions? Seeing none. So if there's no councillor questions, there's no questions from the audience, then our motion is to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you. And we'll move immediately to a vote. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Tob.
Yes.
Councillor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Okay. And with that, we are actually going to take up item 8A, which is in fact the following motion, to approve the order for joint or identical poll locations to install a one jointly owned 45-foot midspan poll along Main Street as indicated on the plan marked Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion or comments? Thank you. Moving then to the vote. Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Tob.
Yes.
Councillor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Thank you. That action item is over. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yep. We will now move to public comment. If you are in the room and you want to make public comment, you will go back and make sure you've signed up over here where Athena, who has a white shirt on, is holding up her hand, okay? If you're in the audience and you would like to make public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand at this time. Okay. There are 10 people in the audience and I'm on Zoom and I'm going to keep it at 10. How many people are in the room that would like to make public comment?
19.
Thank you. We will begin with the room. When you come forward, please state your name and where you live. I have to finish the following. Public comment will be restricted to two minutes. And I also want to make sure we thank all of the people who submitted public comment online and been in touch with your councillors over the last several weeks. Public comment is on matters within the jurisdiction of the town council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to two minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the council. Please make sure that you note the clock. Athena, where is the clock? Thank you. And finally, I want to just remind you, the First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words "true threat," "true threats" to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawless activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker is engaging in unprotected speech, I must refer to the principles of the freedom of speech. We'll start again with the audience. Please call the first person up, Athena.
Sarah Johnson. Hello, again. My name is Sarah Johnson. I have lived in District 3 for five years and have two kids at Crocker Farm Elementary. I am also a first grade teacher at Wildwood Elementary. I am deeply dedicated and concerned for the Amherst community and the budget crisis affecting the Amherst public schools. After all, the best investment you can make in a town is in its school system. That's why the reputation of a school system is almost always the first thing that is considered by a home buyer. The reputation of Amherst public schools is the reason my family moved here. We thought that the small class sizes and diverse opportunities like the elementary music program were worth the high property taxes. Today, I want to share a conversation that I have with my amazing first graders every year. You see, problems sometimes arise when one student has the option of using a wobble stool and another doesn't. There are two wobble stools in my classroom, so when a child doesn't get that opportunity, they might say, "That's not fair." I always respond with "fair is not equal." And there's always some part of our community that doesn't seem to understand what that means, so I explain it further. If a child has a cut and they need a Band-Aid, I give them one. I do not give everyone a Band-Aid. That would be ridiculous. Equal would be giving everyone a Band-Aid. Fair is giving the child in need a Band-Aid. The mantra in my classroom has become "everyone gets what they need." Even with my limited resources of wobble stools, the children that need them get them and the children that want them might be able to use them later. Only the child with a cut gets a Band-Aid. Amherst public schools are cut and bleeding. Amherst public schools need more funding. Everyone should get what they need. Fair is not equal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for joining us. I, I'm going to remind you that all of the time you take up demonstrating your acceptance or whatever is taken from speakers. So I'm going to ask you to please maintain quiet in the room, just the way people were asked today at the hearing for Ways and Means Committee, okay? We're going to go on to the next speaker. In this case, it's Jennifer Shaw. She is on Zoom. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Shaw and I live in Amherst. I'm a member of the Amherst School Committee and the Regional School Committee, but my comments tonight are my own and do not represent the school committees. My kiddo is in her 11th year as a student in the Amherst and Amherst Pelham Regional School Districts. When she was in fourth grade, she one day said to me out of the blue, "Hey Mom, did you know that equality and equity are different things?" And I replied, "Oh, really? Tell me more about that." And she said, "Equality is the same and equity is fair." We high-fived and then I asked her where she learned that and she said, "The librarian at school." She was referring to Ms. Santiago, who was then and is still now the librarian at Crocker Farm Elementary School. I mean no disrespect when I say that when it comes to the operating budget, perhaps some town council members and some non-voting Finance Committee members and the town manager might want to go back to fourth grade or kindergarten, as the previous speaker said, or at least spend some time in a fourth grade classroom or at a library specialist section, session, excuse me, to learn what our students already know, which is that giving the same to all is equality. It is not equity. Equity would be allocating your resources so that everyone gets what they need. And in a case where resources are so limited that it's impossible to give everyone what they need, then to allocate resources in a way that is thoughtful and reasoned and reflects the community's values without artificial restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Come back to the audience. Oh, I like this. Very good. Thank you so much.
Laura Yvonne Steinman. Hello. I'm getting, my name is Laura Yvonne Steinman and I'm the art teacher at Wildwood. I also co-facilitate the LGBTQIA art club. Currently, Wildwood serves over 320 students. A third of those students are on IEPs or have 504 plans. These are legal documents to follow. Speaking with other specialists and special education teachers, it is currently challenging to meet the needs of everyone's plans. It will be that much more challenging and harder when there are cuts that should not happen. These plans directly impact students' ability to learn and all educators should follow them. If specialist positions are cut to a .9, in reality, that would mean the same workload, actually more work and less time. Please listen to the students, the caregivers, and the educators. We are the experts. We are the experts and we know what is needed. Read your emails, listen to voicemails, read the paper, really take in what is being said tonight and fund our schools.
Thank you for joining us. I'd like the people who have the sign to not hold it up so that people behind you can't see. We love your signs, though. Thank you for all of these up front. Now, we will go back to Jeff Lee. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Jeff Lee, District 5. The renovation expansion plan for the Jones Library that you will discuss tonight should never have progressed beyond its state grant feasibility study. The $46 million proposal, or $55 million when you factor in interest payments, would have us, one, increase the size of the building by 30% when annual visitors have fallen to less than half of what they were 20 years ago. Two, demolish a 15,000-square-foot addition built only 30 years ago, largely for the stated reason that its atrium roof has occasionally leaked. How many homeowners would rebuild their houses if their roofs spring a leak? Three, create a new climate-controlled special collections facility at the estimated cost of $4.5 million that reportedly attracts 600 visits per year or fewer than two per day. I'm all for preserving historical artifacts, but this should be done the way the library leaders have always done it, through private, not public contributions. And four, it spends at least $1.25 million per year of property tax revenues for the next 20 years, when the need for investing this money in higher priorities is becoming painfully apparent. A couple powerful town leaders would have you believe that this project is on track to succeed and that abandoning it will cost more than proceeding. Both claims are untrue. The joint capital planning processes worked well to ensure that the library received necessary maintenance in balance with the rest of the town's needs. That was until 2014, when Board of Trustees President Austin Sarret and Director Sharon Shari began their push for multimillion-dollar MBLC construction grant. We have since learned that the MBLC acts more like a state-sponsored lobbying group for bigger libraries and that their grant is no bargain as it comes with all kinds of strings attached. Receiving it will cost the town, or cause the town to kick in at least $25 million with another $79 million in private donations needed from the Friends of the Jones Library. It also requires destroying much of the downtown icons.
You need to finish with this sentence, thank you.
I ask you to do the right thing and halt this project before it wastes any more of the town's time and money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We'll come back to the room.
Ellen Boucher. Hello. My name is Ellen Boucher and I'm a resident of District 1. I know that the budgeting process is complicated and nuanced and I sincerely appreciate the time and care that you have given to this process and to serving our community. I will say that the proposed cuts to the public schools are severe and they will be devastating in the short and long term. An equal percentage increase does not seem just and fair when it requires one division to make massive cuts while leaving other divisions unscathed. Our conservative budgeting processes that enable setting aside funds for future capital needs while gutting our schools also does not seem just and fair. The urgent need is now and it's in our schools. I'm the parent of two children at Wildwood, one of whom will be entering the middle school next year. The cuts to the region in particular have me worried. I can't imagine how we can lose five core teaching positions as well as councillors and special educators without dramatically changing the culture of the institution and lowering pedagogical standards. If these cuts go through, we'll continue to lose growing numbers of families to charter schools and to private schools, which will diminish our school budget even further. We'll also risk being unable to meet the legally required provisions for our special education students, which makes us liable to being sued. So these cuts are not equitable and they aren't just and they also don't make long-term fiscal sense. So I urge you to do whatever you can to meet the budgetary needs of our schools, both at the region and at the elementary level. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us. We'll go back to Zoom. Irv Rhodes, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, good evening. My name is Irv Rhodes.
You need to speak up, Irv.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Right. My name is Irv Rhodes. I am a resident of Amherst and I'm also a member of the Amherst School Committee and the Regional School Committee. And tonight, I'm just speaking on my own in terms of some things that I would like to bring forward. You know, the fiscal challenges of this regional school committee, not alone the elementary schools, has been a continuing issue for all of us in this town and it's an urgent priority. In past years, the town has set budget guidelines for all departments, but these somehow have consistently failed to meet the regional school committee's needs. Each year, the regional school committee proposes budgets that address student requirements but exceed the guidelines, thus resulting in significant deficits. This has been a recurring issue, including for FY '26. While the regional school committee acknowledges these deficits, some in the town often insist that the regional school committee operate within its means. Means. Ultimately, under pressure from the school committee and parents, the town has historically but reluctantly granted additional funds. This cycle needs to end. Stakeholders must come together as outlined in a motion that I'm bringing before the Regional School Committee. Council members should have already received this motion. Additionally, tonight's agenda titled "Long-Range Fiscal Impacts Task Force" aims to tackle these challenges. However, I must express my frustration that the creators of this agenda item did not inform me for their intention despite knowing I had already.
Irv.
I'm sorry.
We need you to finish.
And anyway, I would like to urge the town council and the Regional School Committee to consider looking at both proposals and taking what is in best, what's best in both of them and coming up with something to move forward with a good plan that represents both the regional and elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Irv. We're going back to the audience.
Deb Leonard. Hi, my name is Deb Leonard. I live in District 5. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and nobody else. I'm here to have, make my statement. I want to talk about democracy and the nature of it. In, in many people's minds, democracy is not an efficient process. It's noisy. It's messy. It's time-consuming and sometimes inefficient. And sometimes the timing is not convenient, but it is not static. It changes, it evolves, and as we learn more as a people and as individuals. If you could write down rules in stone and not reexamine them, then what's the point? Of discussions, public comment, hearings, elections, the appeal process, district meetings. Anna brought a new idea to Finance Committee on Tuesday. Please listen to the recording. What I heard was that equal percentages is the way it's always been done. And if you change that now, you will get no peace until the end of your days. This local government is six years old. You haven't figured out everything yet. You wouldn't even be here if there was an advocacy for change and growth and rethinking the way things always have been done. If you really can't see your way through to looking at something with fresh eyes, then it's just time to stop and step away. It is really striking to me that your agenda item, the district assessment method, is up for discussion in that it applies equal percentages to all the towns. And somehow, that is egregious, but it is considered written in stone when it comes to the departments of the town. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Mickey Rathburn, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Audio now unmuted.
Hi, Mickey Rathburn, District 5. I have a, two comments. On the subject of the school funding, I entirely support Anna's proposal. I think it makes so much sense and I really urge the council to think about it. Now, I have a comment slash question about the library project specifics. From what I've heard, it sounds like people were generally unhappy with Collier's performance as OPM. So I'm asking whether it's advisable to rehire Colliers for this project. Also relating to the Colliers question, when the town ended its contract with Colliers, I wonder whether the parties agreed that Colliers would be hired back at some future point in time? Because if it was a contract termination rather than some sort of suspension that was agreed upon at the time, I wonder whether the town is allowed to simply rehire Colliers without having the OPM contract sent out for a rebid. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We're going back to the room.
Sharon, Ralph, and Lucille Bashpy, did you want to come together? Okay.
Guess we've run out of chairs.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Sharon Ruth and this is my daughter, Lucille. And tonight, we're speaking on behalf of CPAC, the Special Education Parents Advisory Council for the Amherst schools. As parents of kids receiving special education services, we are all too familiar with the equality versus equity discussion in our families.
Mom, why does my brother get to use his computer to type his homework and I have to write mine by hand?
Well, your brother's hands and brain have a hard time working together to write because of his disability, but your brain and your hands don't struggle as much.
Mom, that's not fair.
Equity is not the same as equality. Equity means that everybody gets what everyone needs to have a level playing field.
I still wish I could use the computer for my homework.
We understand that town departments have long lists of what they need and they're probably all wanting the equivalent of using computers for their homework, but the reality of budgeting-
But the reality of budgeting is that we can't provide everything for everyone. We have to invest wisely to meet future needs. What message are we sending about our values as a town and our role as a welcoming, humane place to live? If we say a shiny new building or a theoretical credit rating that saves a few tenths of a percent in interest are more important than our most vulnerable children? What message are we sending when we say we would rather force cuts on equipping our children for the future than risk a little bit of discomfort? How do we encourage families to move here? Improving our tax base, supporting our local restaurants and merchants, and boosting our property values? If our message is that schools aren't worth a small sacrifice? School budget cuts mean that education plans for students with disabilities and learning differences will most likely not be able to be fully implemented due to limited staffing, putting the district in jeopardy of being out of legal compliance with the federal law. Families could sue the district, costing the district a great deal of time, money, and bad publicity. Last year, forty percent of proposed budget cuts affected kids in special education. This year, it's seventy percent of proposed cuts.
Please.
We need our special education teachers and staff.
Thank you both for joining us. Richard McLean, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Richard McLean. I'm an Amherst District Two resident and a parent of two Fort River students. I'd like to say that equal percentage increase of town department budgets is an overly rigid operating principle, ill-suited to a town of our size. A town council with a full-time town manager should be capable of more complex budgeting. Adhering to the equal increase model leaves the town unable to respond to unequal challenges across divisions and creates artificial budget crises. I urge the council to listen to Councilor Goethe's FY26 Budget Guidelines revisions. Large cuts to our education budgets will lead to even more families abandoning Amherst School districts for choice and charter schools, increasing costs to the town. These cuts will threaten legally mandated special education programs. Aside from failing to serve the children of this town, not properly funding these programs is short-sighted budgeting and could also open the district and town to legal action. The districts have communicated what they need to properly educate our children. Let's please listen. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Back to the room. Nina Mankin.
Hi, my name is Nina Mankin. I'm in District One and I want to thank you all for all your hard work. And I think most of us in this room really do appreciate all that you do. My family has lived in this community for nearly six decades. When my brother went through this school system, we were the second in the state. We have been, held that place as a great school district until really the last ten years. There are many reasons why that has changed. We're now fighting to be in the middle of that. And I am really looking for us as a community to have a vision that includes excellence in our schools and that does not see that as one thing among different departments. It is all of our, all of our goal and all of our, that necessity for our community is to raise the quality of our education back to where it's excellent once more. If you ask any real estate agent why people move to a town, they will tell you that it's for the quality of the schools and I will add for the quality of their libraries, because I believe that's very important. To silo, to silo our departments, to different departments is the wrong concept around how we can support our community. And I do not believe that equal percentages keeps that siloing from happening. I believe that looking at needs of the schools is looking at needs of our entire community and that our vision needs to be to raise that level of our education back to where it is once again excellent and that that will in fact support our entire community. So we're looking for you to have a vision beyond this moment here. And if there is not a time to change what we've been doing for.
Your last sentence, please.
Then this has to be the moment to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Lou Conover, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
My name is Lou Conover. I live in District One on Pulpit Hill Road. I find it I find it difficult to understand why we're still talking about the library. The point is that this has been, this project has been going on for far too long. It has run into far too many difficulties. It is out of compliance with far too many state and federal regulations. It's going to cost far too much and the costs are only going up. And in fact, given the situation in the world right now, especially with the economy and with our international relations and tariffs, it's going to go up even more. The point is, if we spend money on the schools, where are we spending, where are we getting the resource from? It's people. We're spending money on the people here and that is not something that's affected by tariffs. An investment in our schools is a far better and less expensive investment in something that is going to make far more of a difference to the people in the town. I find it difficult to understand why we're still chasing around after the library after it's run into so many difficulties. And it's really it's really questionable whether it's ever going to succeed. And even if it does, the costs are going to just continue to rise, putting more pressure on the schools and the streets and everything else that the town needs to do. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Angelica Bernal.
I knew you were someplace.
Good evening, everyone. Angelica Bernal, District Two. So I'm ceding my time today to my daughter.
My, my name is Siri Ponatashide and I go to Fort River School coming on this program. And I like my teachers. And there's a new thing where we get to go to kindergarten and in fourth grade where we get to do orchestra. And when I heard about the budget cuts, I was mad and sad because they're going to cut up practices and specials and that means no more going to kindergarten. And that makes me mad. So don't be afraid to stand for me and the other kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
And I just wanted to add that I was really happy and proud to see all of you at UMass for the Joint Means and Ways Committee. And I simply wanted to remind you of some words that both the inspiration of seeing all of our students, it was something like I'd never seen before. It filled me with so much pride. And I hope you were also inspired by the words of that day. And I'm thinking here of the words of Joe Comerford, who said that we're about healing, stabilizing, and transforming. And I know that you all heard that and I hope that we can go over that crisis that we're facing in our schools and really invest in our kids because not doing anything about that crisis is going to come at a really high price. And these are the kiddos that have to pay for that price. So thank you.
Thanks for joining us. We have someone who is listed as an iPhone, but if you enter the room, you need to state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name's Kate Westpher. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Sorry, I'm also in the middle of putting my three-year-old's bed, so it might get noisy. I'm Kate Westpher. I live in District Three. I'm a mom of two Crawford Farm Elementary School students. I've worked for the district for the past seven years at Fort River Elementary School and currently at Wildwood Elementary School. I'm not going to say anything genius or novel that ten other people in this room haven't already said. But what I've been reflecting on beyond the obvious equity challenges are just what a town serves to do and what the collective work of the town is built to foster. And all I can really think of is it's built to build the next generation of students or the next generation of people and to meet the needs of the people living in the town. We moved to Amherst for the schools. My sister moved her family across the state to grow up in community with us, but also for the schools. People stay in our town and our town grows because of the reputation of the schools. Working within the schools, there is no redundancy. There is no extra people hanging out, just making the world slightly better. Everyone there is there by necessity, by law in many cases, and to meet the needs of the learners. If we cut any of that out, we cut out access and we cut out knowledge and we make our schools that much poorer. People with choice may choose to leave and that makes the town that much poorer for the rest of us. I urge the town councils to complete whatever magic you guys have to continue to fund the schools and prioritize the next generation and the needs of our current generation. Thanks so much.
Thanks for joining us. We'll go back to the audience.
Kathleen Mitchell.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kathleen Mitchell. I'm a District Five resident and a parent of two kids in our schools. I'm here tonight to advocate for more money for both the regional and the elementary schools. Today I got to see our students and educators marching to UMass in an effort to save their schools and their own educations. It was very emotional to see and should bring home to all of us that our schools are facing a devastating crisis. What our school leadership is asking Amherst for right now is only a fraction of what our schools truly need and our children deserve. I want to address two of the potential barriers to increasing school funding. The first is the issue of equal percentages. This is just not something that other communities do because instead they create operating budgets based on need, equity rather than equality. In Amherst, we don't insist on equal allocation of resources and other aspects of budgeting. Departments within the municipal budget don't receive the same percentage increases because allocations are based on need. We also don't insist on equal division of resources in the annual capital improvement plan, with certain departments receiving millions of dollars each year and others, including the schools, receiving very little. Again, this is presumably based on need. The second issue I want to mention is that it is somehow too late to discuss changes to the financial guidelines. We have all known since September that the schools would face huge deficits in FY26. District leadership, educators, and parents have been raising the alarm about this for many months, since long before the budget guidelines were written. That this information was not considered before now isn't the fault of our children. Many of us are wondering, when was the appropriate time to talk about what our kids need? And while I understand that some of you are asking questions about next year and the one after, for those of us who have children in the schools right now, we would take even one more year of quality education for our kids. One more year makes a huge difference in the life of a child. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Maria Kapicki, please enter the room.
Thank you, Maria Kapicki, South Amherst. I'm commenting about the library project. I sent you a very long message. I hope you have read it. I'm going to stay high-level for right now. The answers that you have received are completely inadequate. And I hope that tonight, maybe finally, the town councillors will demand genuine, honest, full explanations and documentation. The truth of the matter is that this project is not going to cost forty-six million. That's a figure from six months ago, really a year and a half ago. And that was before the world completely went sideways after January. So, and we have not completed a Section 106 process. We have not completed an environmental review. We have not done rebidding on parts of this and we haven't, I mean, it's just ludicrous. It's not going to be forty-six million. I think a lot of you know that and you need to be honest about this. It's not going to be fifteen point eight million for the town because you are on a good day, a very, very good day, and we don't, we're not going to have this seven million dollars short now. If this goes forward, it's not who's going to pick up the difference because the town will have already committed and paid for all the money. And when it goes over, Fontaine Brothers is not going to eat the overage. The town would. So it's not even going to be seven million over. It's going to be nine or eleven or who knows how much over. So please, Town Council, we're counting on you to get honest discussion and full documentation to happen now before a really bad decision is made. Thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us. Athena.
Eli Meyer.
Hello, I'm Eli Meyer from District One. I have two kids in the Amherst schools, one in Wildwood and one in the middle school. First, I'd like to just thank you all. I don't think anyone here envies your job of trying to it's a lot more fun to be in those positions when budgets are going up than when budgets are going down. So thank you for your work. I would like to say that my kids really enjoy the Amherst schools. They are doing well and they want to go to school. They're they're excited to go to school and I would like it to stay that way. I've been thinking about this whole equity versus equality thing that people have been talking about with analogy, if I have a budget for my car every year and out of that budget I have to get I have to get coolant and I have to get oil and I have to get gas. And next year, the coolant and the oil stays the same price and the gas doubles in price. That doesn't mean that I then decide to just buy half the amount of gas and the same amount of coolant and the same amount of oil. I would then not be getting the maximum value out of my car. So I would go back and I would look at how much I'm buying of all three and come up with a new a new amount for all three to get the maximum value. And I think the same thing applies to budgets when they're going, when they're stressed in the town. And I would hope that we can find a way to maximize the value that we all as residents are getting out of our town and not just caught the one thing that's sticking out. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. Arlie, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, Arlie Gould, South Amherst. The Amherst Charter says, "The town council may require the town manager to appear before it at any time to provide specific information on the conduct of any aspect of the business of the town." It also says that the council has to give at least five days' notice and provide questions in writing to the town manager. So the document that you have in your packet seems to be the questions submitted by the council and the town manager's responses. In reading it over, it did not seem specific. It was vague. It kept saying that the contingency monies would cover the expenses that were being asked about. And at the end, it asked who would be responsible if the library couldn't meet its financial obligation. All that was presented was a list of the different sources of funding for the project. The question wasn't answered. So I hope the presentation and discussion on the agenda about the Jones that you will be having will provide some clarity and specific information for the council and the public. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Athena.
Alex Lopez.
You can hear me clear.
Nope. You have to come on.
Amazing thing is that there's actually nothing in the bylaws. It says like but there's nothing further. It says it can be split surplus if they're in their third, but here we are.
I'm Alex Lopez. I live on Potwine Lane. I think in a lot of these conversations, we talk about preventing harm, keeping the peace, as if things are going well. I think we need to acknowledge the harm that has been done by this body year after year after year after year. And I would hope that this body would have the decency, not only to fund the schools, but to apologize to the schoolchildren that it is harm. Because that peace has been kept by the student who shrugs off a ceiling tile and continues along their day when the middle school roof collapses on them. That peace is kept by all of the children and family members of paras who look at them and say, this is all you make? What do you mean we can't afford it? We have paras who are filling out food stamps while they work here and we are saying that we are doing a good job. The budget that is being considered right now relies on there only being a 1% increase in negotiations with our educators in a year where the cost of living is guaranteed to exceed that. And so before we move on to rectify the future, I think it is important that we realize we are doing harm now. And what is in front of you is making it worse. This is not a sustainable future because it has not been sustainable all along the way. The only thing that has been sustaining this is the suffering and pain of students and staff in our schools so that you don't have to deal with it.
Thank you for joining us. The next person is identified as an iPad. When you enter the room, please state your name and where you live.
Is that me? Because I got a signal to unmute.
It is you.
Okay, then I'm Hilda Greenbaum, District One on Montague Road. You've heard all the reasons and all of the people and all of the causes that need money in this town. And to me, if we don't fund the schools, you're not going to have people that are going to pay whatever the Jones Library is going to cost. It'd be absolutely folly to sign a contract to build a new Jones Library when we don't have the money to pay for the things that are really important. We don't have school, good schools, then we won't have a middle class that we've lost already in the schools that have this big. But if we don't have money for the schools, we'll have less people to pick up the overage that we know we're going to get from signing a contract for Jones Library now. And I think it would be just irresponsible to take a position of continuing this project when we don't know where the money is going to come from. And I had a lot of things to say. Why I don't think we should build the library now, but you've heard it all and nobody's listened. So I'm just saying, just kill it and spend the money on the schools. So at least we might have a population here to pay whatever the library is going to cost in the long run.
Thank you for joining us, Hilda.
Benson O'Connor.
Vincent O'Connor, 133 Summer Street, 175 Summer Street. And to the councillor from District One who says he hasn't gotten any comments from, from his constituents, unlike the situation when we had a town meeting where 300 and some odd, 200 and some odd people listed their addresses and phone numbers, there is no document that lists the phone numbers of any and addresses of any member of this council. So we have heard from District One residents tonight, and I intend to say something about what has always been done. What has always been done until we had this council was that the manager's budget was presented in late January, not May 1st, creating a situation by presenting the budget on May 1st, where by the time the public hearings have happened and people have decided that the school budgets are inadequate, what has to happen is the money that needs to be put in those budgets has to be taken out of someplace else, completely wrong. Second, what has not always been done is to have the regional school budget in the manager's budget. That is not what has always been done. The regional school budget has been presented by the regional school committee to town meeting directly. The school committee has actually voted on the budget that they spent a year formulating. And the manager's budget has been adjusted by the vote for the school budget by the town meeting, at the end of the town meeting. So that's, so that's what has always been done. And what we have now is for the last few years, false and misleading statements about the budget by the Town Manager.
That needs to be your closing statement.
About the state of the town's fiscal. That is what should not be done anymore.
Thank you for your comments. Katie Dixon Gordon, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hello, can you take her potty? Sorry, guys. It's bedtime and my three-year-old is needing to go to the restroom. So I will begin now. My name is Katie Dixon Gordon. I'm a resident of District Five and a parent of two kids, one current and one future Crocker Farm attendee. And I also want to acknowledge and thank the councillors for facing this tremendous task of funding our town with increasing costs and limited resources. And I really appreciate the work that several of the town councillors have done in trying to marshal additional resources at the state level. I bought a house in Amherst and paid property taxes on the order of what a tuition at private school would be because I believe in public schools and because I wanted to live in a place that had a diverse student body and a strong school system. So I just want to echo the sentiment that many others have shared more articulately than me. Equal is not equitable. I support Anna's proposal. Many other towns have different budget guidelines. And, and I think it's more important for a town to maybe work out the difficulties among different jurisdictions than to polarize with its residents. I plead that the Town Council listens to the residents when we are asking for a more flexible and responsive budget that addresses our schooling needs. Our town's future rests in maintaining and in fact strengthening our schools, including at the regional level. I worry about my ability to maintain property value if our reputation tanks. I worry about our ability to retain special instructors, specials instructors that will leave if they need second jobs. And frankly, I realize this is a difficult task, but we're facing a dire moment in history and it's time to invest in what will keep our town and democracy strong. And if we care about literacy, we care about literacy, might I say, that we should be investing in reading specialists and not a library that a decreasing minority of population will be able to use.
Thank you for joining us.
Allegra Clark. Hi, I'm Allegra Clark, District Two. I wanted to just thank all the parents who are here tonight. As you just saw, it's potty time, it's bedtime, and it's dinner time. And we're all here because we care about our kids. I just wanted to talk a little bit more about equity from a different lens. Over the past couple of years, as our budgets for schools have gone down, our populations have gone up in certain areas. We've had an increase in special education students, English language learners, and non-white students. The Amherst School District percentage of white students is 45%. Black or African-American students, 10%. Hispanic or Latino students, 24.5%. Asian students, 12%. And multirace, 6.9%. That's the elementary level. And the regional level is 57.5 white, 7.8 black, 17.6 Hispanic or Latino, and 9.6 Asian, when that is not a reflection of the population of the town as a whole. It's actually a larger percentage in our school district of non-white students. So I want us to think about equity from that perspective. And I also just want to share where the impacts of previous budget cuts have already been. I reached out to the Wildwood Librarian this past week to let her know that a local author was offering in-person author visits as a result of trying to combat some of the racial bullying that's been going on in town and in our schools. And she said she's so stretched thin because she lost her para educator two years ago. And she can't even make, you know, it's hard to find the time to set something like that up as much as she would love to create that opportunity for our students. She's just so stretched thin. And if she goes down to a .9 from a full-time employee, there's not going to be the opportunities for our kids to have things like that coming in. So please think about that when you think about our budgets.
Thanks for joining us, Allegra. Rebecca, please enter the room. State your name and where you live. You need to unmute.
Hi, my name is Becca Watkins. I live in District Two and have two kids at Fort River. Pretty sure you already know what I'm going to say and what I'm going to ask for and that you're all tired of hearing the same thing. But we're all pretty tired of asking for the same thing, but we don't know what else to do. You, as a Town Council, and you, Mr. Buckelman, as our manager, make the decisions that impact our town today, tomorrow, and years down the line. As your constituents, we are begging you to prioritize our schools. Support Councillor Gautier's proposal. It seems like many of you no longer have children in the schools here, but please make choices like it's your children or your grandchildren that do attend these schools. Without strong schools, there is no strong future for our town. And as a side note, I'd like to highlight what others, several others have said, that students will choice out of our schools or choose charter schools. This is not anecdotal. This happened in my daughter's class at Fort River. 25% of students choiced out, 25%. I myself looked into choicing out after only one year here. This is embarrassing and it should be something we actively try to keep from happening.
Callum, do you want to speak?
My, my eight-year-old would like to speak too.
I was really looking forward to playing a trombone in band at school, but if there's not enough money, I won't be able to, and that wouldn't be very fun. So.
Please fund our schools.
So I'd just like the Town Council to give the schools enough money to keep that going.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Leila Moshebeck.
Hi, my name is Leila Moshebeck. I live in District One. You have very much heard from me before. I have my five-year-old and my eight-year-old with me here today in part because I didn't expect to have to be here yet again, to state the obvious, that it's unacceptable that our schools are in crisis for lack of adequate funding. But I also brought them here to remind you that my children are your constituents too. You have a duty to the members of our community that are too young to vote, as well as to those of us that can. In the last three months, my second grader has had three different main teachers. Fort River Elementary has lost its principal of 20 years midway through the school year. We face losing our cherished specialist teachers and the essential and legally mandated support for our most vulnerable students amid an already precarious political climate for these communities. Well before the Trump administration threatened the Department of Education, school leadership raised the alarm that without these modest and frankly still really inadequate funding demands, our schools will crumble and with them, our town. I'm here to remind you that the families of the over 2,000 children currently in Amherst Public Schools are the lifeblood of this town. We get to know our neighbors at school gatherings and soccer games. We own or shop in the town's businesses. We participate in all, in town events. We pay, and we pay higher than average taxes to live here, specifically because Amherst has a school district that prioritizes equity, education, and community. Even those members of the community whose children are grown or with the means and choice to educate them privately will be impacted if you allow our schools to deteriorate further. We are an engaged, and informed, and organized constituency thanks to the great work of SOS Amherst and, you know, the leadership of our schools and the commitment that this issue inspires. We've shown up time and time again to communicate the needs of this town, and Councillor Devlin Gautier has proposed a well-researched path forward. If you fail to hear us today, if you fail to act on the overwhelming consensus of the town you are elected to represent, whose interests are you serving and why? If this town ends.
You need to finish. Thank you.
If this town ends the year with a surplus and yet fails to fund the basic needs of our community, how are we better than our leader, our national leaders, who are defunding our needs?
Thank you for joining us. Janet Keller, please enter the room.
Hi, my name is Janet Keller. I live in District One. In November 21, 3,700 out of 16,000 eligible voters voted for the original $36 million Jones Demolition Expansion Project. The proposed project and cost has been changed upwards many times in the past three years. The current demolition and expansion project bears little resemblance to the original proposal. Many of those who voted for it in 2021 say they would not vote for yes today. But there has been no opportunity for citizens to vote on the current project since the November 2021 vote. Changes in the world economic conditions are likely to have a severe and adverse impact on the cost of most items in the Amherst budget. I too want to pass the vote for the schools over this project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Amber Cano-Martin. Good evening. My name is Amber Cano-Martin from District Two. Want to start the evening by thanking the educators who are with us tonight, the teachers, the paraeducators. Raise your hand if your life was ever changed by a teacher. Thank you for being here, teachers, when you work so hard for our kids day in and day out and you're spending your free time having to be here. And I can imagine how hard it is to work when you think that your position might be cut or it might be cut down to .9 and you still would have to do the same work. I also want to thank the Regional School Committee for voting a higher budget of 5.13% increase. Thank you for listening to our advocacy and restoring some positions. And I want to thank the Amherst School Committee as well for considering higher increases and voting a budget that is a compromise between what is actually needed and the money that is available currently. And finally, thank you to Anna Devlin Gautier for your proposal to change the FY26 budget guidelines in order to give the schools a higher percentage in pursuit of equity, as many have mentioned tonight. So I want to thank you and I hope that everybody here will vote for that. Just want to speak about education and why it's a priority. When something is a priority, like for example, when your roof caves in, would you replace half the roof and let the other half continue to leak into your living space? You wouldn't because a roof is a priority, just like schools are a priority for our town. So they need to be fully funded, not half-funded. And the money needs to be found to do that. I brought my children here tonight because I want them to understand who it is that makes the decisions about what is and isn't a priority in our town. Injustice is a choice. Not prioritizing their education is a choice. And the people who make those choices have names and faces. I hope you will do the right thing. But if you don't, I want my children to know why everything needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Jeff, I'm sorry. Jeff Mazur, I'm sorry. Please enter the room. Were we unable to bring Jeff in? There he is. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, yes. I've heard a lot of these comments. First, I do want to appreciate the work of the council. I know it's, it's not enviable position. And I've spoken a lot with Kathy and Mandy Jo via email. I've looked over the budget and it looks like there's been a lot of surpluses over the past years. I know some of that is due to interest income. But the budget, from what I can see, is based on the previous year budget, not based on previous year actuals. And in my meeting with Kathy at District One and Pricke, it sounds like they're not necessarily looking at what the actuals will be through the end of March, that the decision's going to be made by May 1st. And when I asked Kathy, is there a possibility to look at the actuals to see if we have a sense of revenues? It seemed like that was unlikely. And that was really disturbing to me. I've done a lot of budgets and you want to do your budgets based on the latest and greatest information you have. And the 2025 budget is not our latest and greatest information. And if you look at the comparison of the revenues, you know, they're significantly lower than. And if you look at the comparison of the revenues, you know, they're significantly lower than in the previous, than the previous few years. And I think that there's a pattern of that, and that is a good portion of what is driving multiple years in a row of having a surplus. So if we can get better information, I think we should use that to be able to see what decisions do we actually have to make here, because it, it feels to me that, that the pattern of having so much surpluses is going to fund capital projects. It's not going back into operations. And we could potentially put some of that money back into the school and have different levels of funding like others have mentioned in the past. So I really hope that that, um, the opportunity of being able to look at the March 31st actuals is taken and using that as a baseline for projections for the year, not just saying, not just basing it on the fiscal year 25 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Lynette Arnold. Good evening. Thank you all. Uh, my name is...
Please speak to the mic.
My name is Lynette Arnold. Um, I am a resident in District Four. I've lived for five years. Um, I have a child in the coming days program at Fort River. Um, I asked my child for advice on what to say to you today, and to her it was really clear. The schools need more money. They are doing important work for the future of our community. She sees her teachers working hard, but also every year since kindergarten, we have had to come out and fight tooth and nail to keep crucial student-facing positions from being cut. This is what an eight-year-old who just turned nine can see. As a parent, it is clear to me that our schools are in crisis. We cannot continue with business as usual. Our schools have faced cuts year after year and are at a breaking point. This year again, only schools have been asked to make devastating cuts. I know that we can meet the basic needs of our town in other areas while also acknowledging as a community that our schools have more urgent and long unmet needs. A crisis in our schools is a crisis that impacts the future of our community as a whole. I also want to remind you that our town master plan enumerates a commitment to, quote, "support high-quality schools that are adequately staffed and properly equipped." And the town council has an obligation to this commitment. Councilor Anna Gautier's proposal should be taken seriously, as it lays out important steps you can take to meet this obligation. Please listen to the children, families, and educators of this town. We've been raising alarm about the crisis in our schools for years. Find a way to give the schools what money they need. Invest in the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Um, I think it's Matthew Watcoes?
How's it going, Town Council? My name is Matthew Watkins. I live on Heatherstone Road. I'm here to lend my support to the parents and educators who have spoken more eloquently before me on this topic. I think it's pretty obvious that equal percentage increases to the budget across the board is fairly boneheaded. I think there's a better path forward here, and I think everyone knows it. We shouldn't look to the past and do what we've done before. I think I've sat and I've listened to the town council meetings and the finance meetings, and what I hear is that it's difficult to put a budget together. It's difficult to give different percentages across the board. I understand that. I think the work of a town council is difficult. I think the work of a budget that works for everyone is difficult. I think that if this council does not find a way to do that difficult work, I think the electorate will find a board that will do that work in the next election. Thank you.
Ariel Templeton?
Hello again. Um, my name is Ariel Templeton. I'm a resident of District Five. I have lived on Southeast Street for the past 20 years. Um, and we chose to buy our house in Amherst largely because of the reputation of the schools, even though we didn't have kids yet, but we wanted to eventually. Um, we are the parents now of a thirteen-year-old and an eleven-year-old, and, um, I am the band teacher at the elementary schools. Um, my position is one of the positions that will be reduced um, if the cuts go through that are proposed. Um, and it's the second year that I'm back here talking to you all and talking to the school committee at all the meetings, because this is not the first time our program has faced cuts, and I sadly fear that it might not be the last. Um, it is really disheartening to be in this position year after year and, um, see our schools go through this in a community like Amherst that prides itself on the value of education and has the colleges and the amazing reputation of our schools. But we can't ride that reputation anymore. Um, it's, we're now at a crossroads, and we are working on a deficit already in the schools. If we have these cuts go through, it's not going to be good for our children, and that is the most important thing to put our money into in this town, is our children. That's the future of this town. Those are the kids that are going to be going to the library and the community center that you're renovating, the Bangs Community Center, and I don't understand why we're pouring money into those renovations when we won't have a community to enjoy those spaces if the schools keep operating on a deficit. Um, I can tell you that these small little cuts, the point-nine reductions to specials and music, might not seem like much, but I can tell you personally, for our program, the instrumental program, it means no more fourth grade probably next year, which is just heartbreaking. Um, please fund our schools.
Please finish. Thank you.
Do you want to take the Zoom person?
Um, yes. Ira Brick, please enter the room. You had your hand up earlier, and then I lost it, so I didn't call on you. Ira, please go ahead.
Thank you. Ira Brick, District Four. Um, I just did the math. I've been here thirty-two years. And I have to say, when I moved here thirty-two years ago with a first-grade child, um, somebody told me that the Amherst schools then were resting on their laurels, so this is not a quick decline. This is a long slide, and I support, uh, everything that the teacher said tonight. And I did used to teach elementary school, just so you know. Um, I also want to just talk about how it's also a symptom that we are doing everything we can to destroy the twelve-month economy in this town, and that we are, uh, so mishandling student housing in this town, not insisting on dorms on campus and so on, that that's one more reason why families are not moving here. Um, I want to make another point, though, that I remember when they built the first archipelago five-story dorm downtown. Everybody was bragging how it's going to bring in a million dollars in taxes. And I thought, well, that's one million out of an eighty-two million dollar budget at the time. Now I think it's well over a hundred million dollar budget. And so a million sounds like a small amount of money to an eighty-two million dollar budget. And I think that the seven million dollar shortage that they're talking about for the library, that's seven years of that million-dollar archipelago building. Just to point out, a million dollars is a million dollars, and seven million dollars is not a rounding error when it comes to the library. That's seven years of taxes from one of those five-story buildings. Thanks so much.
Thanks for joining us.
Jason Dorni?
Hello, everybody. I, uh, am Jason Dorni. I'm in District Two. I just want to remind everyone that as a town, we voted to build a hundred million dollar school, and now we're being told that we need to cut positions. I think that we have all said that we value education, and we're looking to all of you to reallocate funding. I echo everything that everybody else here has said. Uh, the schools are the economic engine of our town, and they bring families in. Those families pay taxes. And if we want to have long-term fiscal responsibility, we need to make our schools great so that we can have families move in and we can have a good, educated, uh, population here. Good towns have good schools, and good schools make good towns. Please reallocate funding for schools. I don't want to take up any more time, but I do want to say I don't want our schools to look like our roads. Please don't kick the can down the road any further. Make the decision tonight. Reallocate the funding for schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Jill Breivik?
Hi, Jill Breivik. She/her, Sam, my kiddo, uh, with me. Uh, we're in District One. Um, Sam and Sam's sibling are at Fort River in first and third grade. Um, I am here to speak up in support of all of the dedicated, the, the dedicated group of parents, caregivers, youth, school staff, administrators, and others who've been fighting with everything that they have, and they don't have a lot of free time. Uh, but they do have some incredible organizing power that I've seen, incredible intellect, strategic thinking, problem-solving skills, um, who, who've been fighting against the harmful budgeting practices that officials in this town seem to be dedicated to upholding year after year. It should be clear at this point that you have people who are willing to show up again and again and again to tell you things that you should already know. Um, we all understand and acknowledge the complexities here, and I know it will be more work for councilors, but come on, you've got this. They got this, right? They got this? We think you've got this. We think you can do it. We know you can synthesize the information that parent leaders, teachers, administrators, and a few really great folks on the council like Anna have so clearly laid out for you. The large number of residents who believe in public education and the basic rights of our children are watching, and we also believe in representative democracy, and we are planning our votes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Julie Hadad?
Hi, I'm Julie Hadad. I live at 114 State Street, and I'm here to echo, echo support for a higher allocation of the budget to the schools. Um, I'm a special educator at Crocker Farm, so my property taxes are twenty percent of my take-home pay, right? And, um, I'm also the primary provider for my three kids. One's at Wildwood, and two will follow right behind them. So as a stakeholder, I started looking into the issue of equal percentages and where more funding could come from. And the first thing that came to my mind is the police. Surely they're over resourced. Look at the trucks they drive, the time they have to follow black people around town who are linked to no crime. That's, that's the experience of my children's father, um, but he's not alone. But that's qualitative, right? Like, what about the numbers? So after seeing the document, our school administrators were tasked with putting together stating how our schools could move forward with the proposed cuts. I was trying to imagine myself in your position, um, and hoping to see what type of cuts the other town departments and services were facing um, with the four percent increase. But the documents laying out how they would proceed with their cuts, those weren't obvious to me or the knowledgeable folks that I asked. The appearance, of course, is that those departments aren't being put in the same position of, of spending hours and hours trying to figure out how to make it work with less and less year after year, like our administrators do. Um, but that, that can't be right, right? I can't it? Uh, so I guess my first request is that the public kind of can easily see and compare the cuts um, all the departments are being asked to make, um, just for the sake of comparison. Um, and finally, I want to say as parents, we know that we give our kids everything we have, and then we find some more. And I go to work, and I watch my colleagues give kids everything they have, and then find some more. So my second request is to find everything our schools need and some more.
Thank you for joining us.
Olivia and Aria?
Hi, my name is Aria Moore, and I'm from District Five. I'm here because I play the trumpet, and I'm in fifth grade, and I really like playing it, and with the cuts, it would make me not have such a big band, and it wouldn't be as fun for me to play. Um, I'm also going to soon be going in the middle school, and I know that they're cutting a whole team off. And then there wouldn't be many teachers for me to, like, get good education and stuff. Um, and so I don't know, like, if I would even go there with, with teachers not being there for me to teach me and stuff. I would just go to a private school, and I wouldn't go there, because I really want good teachers. But with this budget cut, I wouldn't have teachers to do this or to get good education for me, and um, I really want that in the future.
Hi, my name is Olivia Moore. I live in District Five. Have you guys ever tried to imagine a place with no education? From the little things of not being able to read a stop sign, which would create really big problems, to people not doing their job. That creates a cycle. No one doing their job, no more people get their education, which, uh, which creates complete chaos. Um, and that's what's going to happen if these cuts go through. Thank you.
Thank you both for joining us.
That's the end of the...
That concludes public comment. Before we take a break, which we will do, I also want to recognize the many people who put forward the effort today to bring, uh, students, parents, and teachers to the hearing over at the, um, university. Uh, it was an amazing experience to see so many students show up on their behalf. And it was noticed by the many, many people there. My count is there were seven counselors in the room at different times, and we also want to thank one of our school committee members for testifying. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to take a break, and we will reconvene at five after eight. ... and intergovernmental agreement. Eight C, Charter Review Committee Extension Request. And eight E, Contract Authorization Public Education Transportation Services. Yes, Counselor Hanke.
I would object to adding eight E. So if you added it, I'd just pull off E, transportation.
All right. Kathy?
As I understand it, the first two get referred to committees the way they're set up. Is that correct?
That one of them's, one gets referred to committee. One is, there's, there's actually three votes with regard to the charter commission, charter committee. One is a referral to finance because of their money that they want. One is for us to improve what's called an inter-agency service agreement, and that's, it's a state agreement. It's between two state agencies, if you will. And the other one is to extend their time. So there's only really one referral, and it's the referral for funds to the finance committee.
The other referral was the one Mandy just asked to have removed.
It's.
That's not a. The bus leave.
That's not a referral.
That would have been a referral. Okay, thanks.
No, actually, it's not a referral, I think. It's a motion to authorize.
Oh, because I thought it was going to get referred to finance. No.
Motion to authorize.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'm going to read the motion and include the two that I have suggested. Okay? The following items were selected, and I've added to them. To move the following items in the printed motions there under and approve those items as a single unit. Six A, Adoption of Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Proclamation. Six B, Adoption of Amherst Global Village Festival Day Proclamation. Six C, Adoption of 2024 Arbor Month Proclamation. Six D, Adoption of 2025 Arbor Month Proclamation. Eight B, Charter Review Committee Appropriation Request and Intergovernmental Agreement. Eight C, Charter Review Committee Extension Request. And then eleven A to C, Approval of Minutes. February 10th, 2025, Public Forum on Appropriations Outside the Budget. February 10th, 2025, Regular Meeting. March 10th, 2025, Regular Meeting. Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
I apologize, but I'm going to remove six C.
Six.
C. The 2024 Arbor Month Proclamation.
Thank you.
I apologize to the council in advance.
Is there anybody, is there anything else anybody wants removed? Okay, the motion then includes all that I've listed earlier except for six C, Adoption of the 2024 Arbor Month Proclamation. With that, we'll move to a vote. We begin in this.
Second.
I'm sorry. Thank you. We needed a second. Thank you. We move to a vote. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
It's unanimous. With that, we're going to move to a brief, the last couple paragraph or so for the Child Awareness, Abuse Awareness Prevention Month. Counselor Hanke, one of the sponsors.
Yes, so it will come in in the now-therefore clause, but there is a flag raising on April 1st at 4:00 PM in front of Town Hall. And this is now therefore, we, the town, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and further recognize this proclamation by raising the Child Abuse Prevention Flag from April 1st to April 30th, 2025, to help cultivate awareness for all residents of Amherst.
Thank you. We're going to now move to the same process for the Amherst Global Village Festival Day. Counselor Hanke.
Thank you. This is on April 5th. Fifth. April 5th, most of the day. I'm not sure exactly when we're reading the proclamation yet, but the festival is basically all day. Now therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2025, as Amherst Global Village Festival Day, and encourage all residents to participate in this special day of celebration, education, and cultural exchange from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the Amherst Town Common, and be it further proclaimed that through the Amherst Global Village Festival Day, we honor the diversity that strengthens our community and seeks to inspire all residents to continue fostering understanding and respect across cultures. May this day serve as a reminder of the beauty of our shared humanity and our collective responsibility to build a more united world.
Thank you. And I want to thank both the DEI Department and Counselor Hanke for the significant work that was put into this. We're going to now, the 2024 Arbor Month Proclamation was pulled from the consent agenda. Counselor Hanke.
I don't expect a debate. As I said, I apologize. This is for, this is proclaiming a month that happened 11 months ago, and I can just not vote yes to something like that, so I had to pull it to vote no.
Ana Devlin-Gothier, can you give us a report from GOL?
I can, and I apologize that there's no written report. I was writing other long memos. Sorry. So this was sent to us by our Tree Warden and our Shade Tree Committee. This is passing a proclamation in recognition of Arbor Day, Arbor Month. Every year is part of the requirements for maintaining our status as a Tree City USA, city. And they had not submitted one to us last year, and we didn't catch it, and they didn't catch it until now. So we got the 2025 one and the 2024 one, once they realized that. So this body, I'm sure, is not comfortable with the practice and doesn't want to get into the practice of retroactively proclaiming months, but there's nothing necessarily prohibiting that. And this would allow us to maintain that status and not have to start the process over from the beginning.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Oh, sorry. And this was voted unanimously clear, consistent, and actionable by GOL.
Thank you.
As were all of the other, with one absent, as were all of the other proclamations and resolutions.
Thank you. Seeing no comments or questions, I'm going to move to a vote on this.
We need a motion, please.
I'm sorry, we do. It's to adopt the 2024 Arbor Month Proclamation as presented.
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Counselor Hanke.
No.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye, and it is 12 in favor, one opposed. And now we'll move on to the final one, which is the 2025 Arbor Month Proclamation. Ana Devlin-Gothier, please.
I'm going to read the final whereas, as well as the now therefore. Whereas, the Public Shade Tree Committee is sponsoring tree planting and educational events throughout April 2025, including a tree planting and pollinator garden installation at the North Common on Saturday, April 12, a tree planting event on the North Amherst Common on Arbor Day, which is April 25, and is participating in this town's Sustainability Festival, providing free saplings on April 26. Now therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Arbor Month in the town of Amherst, and we urge all residents to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our town's urban forestry program.
Thank you. We're going to move on to presentations and discussions. The library building project is first. In your packet is a series of questions. I asked each counselor if they had questions that they would like to ask. Four councilors had submitted questions. Those in turn were given to the town manager, and he, along with other people, have provided those written responses. Are there any questions on the responses? Jennifer Taub.
Yes, some, some of what I'm going to say was said in the public comments, but I was, my takeaway from the responses is that any overage will be covered by the contingency, and if the capital campaign isn't able to achieve its goal, they'll take out a loan. And that was not reassuring to me. Again, I'm repeating what's been said multiple times in public comment, but the, the world has changed a great deal since, well, since at least when we voted on the, to extend the borrowing authorization in December of 2023. And it doesn't feel credible to me that a bid that was submitted last October, that there, that the contractors could hold their bids for going on six months. And the contingency is not there so that we, so my question is, before a contract is signed, there will be, the, will be a conversation, I imagine the town manager will have with the contractor, and regarding whether the bid still holds after almost six months, and if the subcontractor bids have remained the same. And I didn't feel like that was answered adequately. I'm not clear on whether the town manager would come back to us if it, if in fact the contractor needs to increase the cost. You know, it's all we read in the paper with the tariffs and the changing economic outlook, that there was a recent New York Times article that said developers in New York are actually experiencing contractors who will only hold their bids for two weeks, because that's how, that is the fluctuations they're seeing in the cost of materials. So I, it, I, it just doesn't, again, feel credible to me that we're talking, that we feel comfortable that there's, the contractors are able to hold their quotes. You know, with the capital campaign, you know, in Amherst, the, our greatest demographic is college and university students who are unlikely to be contributing. We're not expecting them to contribute to the capital campaign. But our next largest demographic are those of us who are 55 and older. And as we see retirement accounts losing their value almost daily, I, I question whether many of the pledges that have been made over the last, you know, two to three, even within the last year, which are, many of those are probably from our 55 and older community. How many of those, you know, thousand, $5,000 pledges will be able to, people will be able to hold to those pledges at the, at the amounts that they have? So this all feels very fungible to me. We're talking about a, well, I'm getting off of the questions, but we have a school deficit, and we're talking about servicing a loan to, you know, one and a half million dollars a year. So I feel like the world has changed since we voted in December of '23, and that we're just sort of moving along as though everything's just going according to plan.
We are using clock, and so I do want to ask councilors to stick by it. I had not mentioned that before we started, and so please, we will stick by it. Paul, did you want to address that question now?
Sure, and I know Bob Parent is in the audience. If he wants to join, I'm not sure if he's able or not. Those are very, very valid concerns, and they're on our minds as well. In terms of the holding the quote that applies to the school building project, that, that steel hasn't been delivered. If it goes through the Canadian border, that tariff will be hit them. But, you know, that's, you know, that one's, I think, we feel more comfortable with, because we have a larger contingency. This contingency is 10%, which is where we would like to be with a contingency. But you, there are a lot of, there continue to be uncertainties, which is why we do not have a signed contract. And you mentioned the two biggest ones. The first is, are people going to hold their quotes? And from what the conversations Bob Parent has had with the general contractor, it seems to be that they're willing to, but we never know that until it really comes time to sign a contract. The willingness of the, of the vendor to sign a contract to build the building for this fixed sum is going to be the telltale time. So that's point one. And then there, there are subcontractors, and some, you know, whether they hold their bids as well. There's a provision, if they don't, for, to seek another bid for that subcontracting work. All in all, we have a budgeted amount that we have to stick with, the $46 million. And then that's the number we have. We don't have a dime more than that available to us. The second piece of it, so if we can get this project credibly, with a, with a credible contract. The second piece of it, so if we can get this project credibly, with a, with a credible contract signed that will meet that budgeted amount that we have approved, then we will move forward. The other pieces that you have concerns about is whether the library trustees can meet their side of the bargain, in essence. But they have said, you know, we, we have been pretty clear, the council members have been individually clear that about 15.8 million is what the town can contribute. And the remainder is with the M B L C grant, and I tried to lay this out in the, in the document, and with the fund, the private fundraising. You express concern about, can they meet that fundraising goal? And that is a question that, that's really, that's, the, and the trustees have said, we will meet our side of the bargain, and that's what our M O A says. We will produce the side, the money that we have promised you. And what if you can't raise it? And they, they have had contingencies, which I, they talk about with either a bank loan or mass development loan or something like that, where they have their endowment to pledge as collateral.
Kathy Shane.
I want to, wanted to build on Jennifer's, Paul. I think it's highly unusual to not have the contracts in hand when we go to sign them and say, we'll just eat into contingency. So really, we have to rebid the roof. And my understanding was originally we were going to rebid the roof to see what the slate roof installation, not just the cost of slatewood, before we went to a contract. So eating into it before we start building and planning to eat into it afterwards, not adjusting to these underneath. And the answer said, some of the subcontractors appeared willing to hold on to it. And we could always go to the second lowest. It's not clear to me that the second lowest will hold this month, many months later. And in some cases, the second lowest was quite a bit higher. So again, getting to an ever slender margin is not a good idea for all the reasons you just mentioned. And when this, when it comes to the school, we have a price for steel. That's not the problem. It's the tariff that might or might not appear when it gets in custom. So we bought the steel. We just haven't, the transport thing. So Barry Roberts just redesigned a building, because the price of spiel has gone up so much since he originally conceived it. So we don't even know with the steel. So I worry about that. So the second one is the answer on O P M. My perception from watching what happened over the first few years was that we didn't have a good, solid O P M team working for us. And I think very wisely, you stopped paying them at the point, we didn't have anything for them to do, because we were waiting to pick, to rebid and do some other pieces. So I can't understand why you would go back to the same O P M. I, I don't understand that at all. I mean, it, it seems super risky. They should have caught some things way back when. If anything, I would have called them negligent. So those are the big ones on going forward. And then the N E H and HUD, I think those were positive answers we had on them. Do, A, does the grant still exist? Have they, have they been targeted or not, and when will we get them? I would like more assurance on that, and it seems to me we're still not at the end of section 106. And I wish that it's been started three years ago, but we won't get, everything said contingent on the final piece. So the big one is not going into signed contracts without signed contracts for dollars that eat into. We, we had, we had a wedge called a contingency, and we were, the general contractor had a piece of it, but the assurance was they had now come in at the targeted amount, because we still had the contingency. So I don't think it's smart to go into this, eating into contingencies.
Bob, did you want to weigh in on any of these things, or do you want to hold off?
Sure, I can jump in. To Kathy's question, I don't imagine the town would sign a contract until we know how the filed sub bids are going to play out. We have an ongoing discussion with the probably eight to 10 filed sub bid category. Several of them, as you indicated, have agreed to hold their price. Once we're ready to move forward, assuming we're ready to move forward, we would then sort that out. And the good thing is that Mass General Law provides for what happens if you have a low bidder that does not want to extend their bid. It allows for you to go to the number two bidder. I don't imagine that we would sign a contract with the general contractor until we had all of that sorted out. Because I would agree with you, we, we really need to know what the total project cost is before a contract for that total project cost is signed.
And in terms of the O P M, Kathy, you know, I just, first, I want to give credit and thanks to Bob Parent. He, he is, who has been doing the duties that we needed to get done during the course of the last year, roughly. And we haven't missed a beat, and so just credit to Bob for carrying on, making sure that we kept moving forward. In terms of moving forward with this O P M or a different O P M, that'll be our decision to determine what is the best path forward on that. There are pluses and minuses. Bob has had extensive conversations with the principals at Colliers in terms of the people who are on our project. It's a very large company, and so, and so I, we don't, I don't disagree with you with your assessment of the previous work that was done by Colliers. You know, but in terms of moving this project forward, you know, we have, we are having those discussions about the future of the O P M. Colliers is, is basically the best path for, the easiest path forward, I'll say, the smoothest path, because they've already ramped up on the project. They're familiar with it. We've already done the procurement for their services. Anything else on that, Bob?
Let's go to Pam Rooney.
Thank you. Mine has to do with contingencies, and I'm asking if the contingency is going to be, because that's about 3 million, is that going to be tagged to cover all of these change orders, including the difference in price for the slate roofing? The section 106 modifications for preservation or redistribution of mahogany paneling, for which, of course, there's some design work required. And is this, is the design work cost going to have to also come out of the contingency? And as somebody mentioned, that we have some, but not all of the subcontractors' quotes. Do any of the ones that, that float to a new level also have to get covered by this same contingency?
Paul, did you want to address that?
I think Bob's prepared to answer.
I can respond to that. The, yes, the, the purpose for the contingency is to cover items that, the uncertainties, the things that are not known. We have no more funding. We have $46.1 million. If the project moves forward, we have to complete the project within that budget. So the purpose of the contingencies would be to allow us to stay on track with the overall appropriation that the town council has made in the past.
This is, this is putting quite a burden on that contingency.
I'm sorry. Okay. Was that a question? Okay, thank you. Counselor Hanke.
My question's essentially now a follow up to Pam's question, because it was basically the same, but um, it sounds like at this point, before contracts are signed, the contingency is doing double fold. Taking in increased costs that we know are there above what the original bids we expected to sign six months ago were. And reducing the contingency by that amount and by any amount for any changes for whatever ends up with the section 106 review. But then, whatever is left, if the contracts are signed, is the contingency for the rest of the project. And that includes even if the general, the low general contractor bidder agrees to sign a contract there, but costs go up. And so I guess one of my main questions is how much contingency, once all of these sort of known uses of contingency are factored in, is a contingency you believe would be sufficient to get this project to completion within the borrowing authorization that has already been authorized by this council? Because, you know, I have been a, and still am a supporter of this project. But one of the big reasons I'm a supporter of it is because it's supposed to be cheaper than the alternative. But if this project starts and cannot come in under the authorized borrowing amount, we can't leave it undone. And I worry that the contingency of 3 million sounds, 10% sounds fine, until you count that we've waited six months to sign. And we might already know we have to go with not the low bidders that eats into that number, because we haven't recalculated it, that we know there's bids out there that need to be done. And so I guess one thing I'm asking beyond at what number percentage left is a, is a satisfactory percentage for you to believe to sign a contract, is also, what is your thinking on what comfort level you need that this project will come in under this borrowing authorization for you to actually sign that contract? Paul?
Yeah, so, so it has to be under the appropriation, obviously. That's the, that's, there's no wiggle room there for us. And your, what your question is, if I understand it, is like, if a 10% contingency is good now, what if it's, is it, is 9% good, 5%, 3%? What is the contingency that I'm comfortable with signing? I think for us, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, where did the money go? The, the money for the project go? What, like, did it take away some unknowns? And I just have to talk with Bob about what we think the situation is in terms of where we think the contingency might be needed in the future. You know, I think, I think we felt comfortable with the contingency where it is. We don't know how much leeway the general contractor has put into their pricing and how much, how much, how hungry they are for this project at this, we're seeing a lot of projects fall by the wayside. They may be very hungry for this job. We just don't know. So, but we have a bid price. We have the, we have to, we, we really want to get through the 106 review and see where that winds up. And timing is of, the S is, is crucial here, because the M B L C has the April 30th deadline. So those are all the factors that we're taking into consideration. I don't have a hard number. Bob, do you have a number where you say we don't, it's a drop dead number?
I don't either. A higher number is always better than a lower number. I can, I can say that without a doubt. I think, again, once this is real, and I can call up Fontaine and say, we're ready to sign a contract, and they can engage with their subcontractors, and we'll, we'll see how all the numbers work out at that point. And I think, as I said before, I expect to have then a total number in front of us before the contract gets signed.
Bob Hegner.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know a lot about building libraries, but I do know something about fixed price contracts. And if I took this contract to my boss when I was in the private sector, he would laugh at me and say, go back and do it again, because this is very risky, very risky contract. I really can't emphasize what a risk it is to the town to do this. Now, I understand the alternative is also risky, and we have to balance the alternatives. But this particular contract, from where I sit, is, is way beyond a risk I'm comfortable with.
Kathy.
I was at that point, Bob, a year ago, and then I got my arms twisted to vote yes in 2023, because I actually thought there were historic tax credits out there. I didn't know we weren't going to get them. So that lowered some of it. But I think it is very risky. And Paul, when I pushed on Colliers, I was in the room with Colliers in finance when it was the $36 million project. And I said, and Lynn actually asked, in that 36 million, this is three years or four years after we did it, how can it still be at 36? And they said, oh, because we don't need as much contingency anymore, because we're at a certain design phase. And they hadn't even done schematic design, and it turned out it was a $46 million project. You know, it was just, they, they said 2% at that time was fine, and the answer was no. You needed a big design contingency and a big separate contingency, which we had with the school as the design firmed up. So I don't trust them, is I guess, way back when, because I felt they were negligent. Now, I'm even more worried, because we don't have one, and we need a tough one to be out there monitoring what's going on, because it's very tricky. Where, unlike the school, we're building, where we're building something new. We're tearing something old apart, and no one can know for sure what we're going to find. Everyone's done their best. So we need a contingency there. So I, I think we're ever more at risk. And the library showed us what their drawdown is on endowment for the operating budget. If they have to take as much as 7 million out of their 9 million endowment, they don't have a drawdown of a quarter of a million a year. And there goes the operating budget for the library. So I just, so, you know, I know we're not in the driver's seat right now, other than a vote to rescind, and I know that would stop it. And I don't know whether the council is there yet on a vote to rescind. But it is, in our operating budget on the capital side, about a little over a million dollars a year of debt service. That is one of the reasons we are at the level of capital needs we have. So it is sitting there. And I know the alternative needs to be worked out, but I don't ever, I never believed it would be more expensive. I think it might be about as much as the 15 million, and there's money out there that could support it. But I just think we're heading toward, Mandy asked the question of, and I think you were right, Mandy, is 3% enough? Is 5%? You know, I mean, what are we talking about here when we cover the knowns? And the knowns are several things we still have to do to make changes, and we don't have an answer yet. And that's, it's, it keeps, months keep going by, is what's worrying me, that we're not making a decision that maybe we hit the stop button.
Jennifer?
Can I just respond to that?
Please.
So three things. One is, I just want to make it very clear that the town is not accusing Colliers of negligence or any kind of malfeasance or misfeasance or anything like that. That's not the position of the town of Amherst. The, you know, I, I think this, you had the same, you have, you're expressing the same concerns. We have just all the counselors, that same kinds of thing. We're very, we're very cognizant of those concerns and are taking them very seriously. So I, I think that, you know, we don't want to take something on if, if, if it's going to fail or put the town in an unfeasible financial position. That being said, when I look at it, it's on a fiscally responsible level. It's basically a two, two for one match on our, every dollar the town puts in, we get about $2 for that bang for the buck. We have a 15.8, whatever it is, billion dollar grant from the M B L C, plus a pledge of raising a similar amount from the private sector. That's nothing to sneeze at. You're, you know, I think people say there's others who would donate to a renovation. And lastly, our commitment is, you know, it's, it's one of the town council's goals, is to build this building. But we have to do it with fiscally responsible way. And you'll hear me say pretty much the exact same thing with the school budget. I hope everybody has that same kind of concern about putting the town into jeopardy down the road, because it's the same, we have the same concern on both ends. We are looking deep down into the, the future of the financial success of the town. And, you know, I have no intention of signing a contract if it's going to put the town's finances in jeopardy in the future.
Jennifer?
I have a question, but I did first want to respond to what Paul just said about feeling. I, I do not have the same comfort level. You know, with all due respect to how hard everyone's working on the capital campaign, I think it was, it was a really heavy lift before our current, you know, financial setbacks. But I, I am not, I really am not feeling confident that, that $7 million can be raised with the same level of confidence of even a year ago. And if the federal grants, we don't actually get those in hand, I hope that we will. But I know we were concerned about clawbacks with the ARPA funds. So I think until they're in hand, we can't breathe a sigh of relief. It could be $9 million that the capital campaign has to raise, and I just, that doesn't seem realistic. I also, and I- I also, and I, I am concerned that if, when you say the contractor may be hungry, that makes me nervous that will they, you know, will, will they stick to their bid knowing that there will have to be change orders because they don't, you know, want to lose the project? But I also did want to ask with the roof, if, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on this. They will be rebidding the, or bidding the slate roof after the contract is signed? Could you clarify that, please?
Looked above for that.
Bob?
Yes, the game plan would be to remove the scope of the old roof, the, the replacement of the old roof that was originally going to be synthetic slate. Remove that from the scope of the roofing sub bidder and then bid out. Instead of synthetic slate, build out, bid out natural slate. And yes, that would happen after the general contract was executed.
So did you just say after? Did you say after?
Correct.
So how is that cost accounted for in the contingency?
That is correct.
Andy?
Yeah, several things that I've, because I've been thinking about that too. I mean, obviously, we may have to make a hard decision. I don't just think that we're at that point yet. Bob might be able to respond to the first point that I'm going to make, and that is about the contractor, that we have the benefit of a contractor having been the low bidder who's also a very well-known contractor within the region whose rep, reputation is very important to them. And they have had a good success rate in working with other projects. And they're, they're not one of these contractors that has a reputation of coming in with low bids to lure people in, that they, that they have a good rating. And as I said, Bob might be able to comment on that. The other thing that I've been wanting to respond to again is, you know, the, the cost of repair or Plan B or whatever you want to call it. I think that, you know, having taken a tour recently of the library and my prior experience, that building is in far worse shape than people look at because everybody comes into the building and they kind of go to the public areas that are most commonly visited. The worst thing that they see frequently is the atrium if their bucket's up because it's raining that day. But it is pouring in when it's raining that day. It's not a small issue. It's a big issue and that's an expensive repair to make. Other things that we know about is that the HVAC system and the, the risks of what we're going to find in the building when we start to repair it, if that's the option that we have to go to, are really much greater than I think that people realize. And the other thing is that the handicapped accessibility in a lot of that library is just really beyond an easy solution. And once we delve into it, we are going to be required to deal with the handicapped access issues. And for all of those reasons, I think that the cost of repair estimates that were made a coon riddle based upon the Western Builder Assessment, it, it just shows that we need to recognize that it is going to cost more.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Um, thank you, Lynn. I share a lot of the concerns that were already voiced. Particularly concerned about what would happen if the fundraising doesn't meet its goals or if construction or material costs go up or if bids climb. Or once we implement the change orders, what the actual cost of the project will be and if that will exceed what our expectations were after a contract is signed. I think that is like, for me personally, one of the biggest concerns. And I know, Paul, you talked about some of the sort of things that we have in place to protect us in that case, collateral to offset those possibilities. But I think a lot of those options also have long-term financial implications for both the town and the library. And so they don't feel very comforting, for lack of a better word. But you did say something that felt really important to me, something along the lines of that you will not sign a contract that will put the town in financial jeopardy in the future. And I think that that's at the heart of many of the concerns that are shared right now. And so if you cannot say for certain what contingency you'll be looking for to make that determination, how are you going to assess that?
So we don't have the full picture yet. Once we get the full picture and we know what is going on, on the building side, the cost side, that's, that's the information we can assess most accurately, I think. The fundraising side is a more speculative judgment. And that is, you know, not on the town, it's on the library trustees. And then it's really the confidence in that elected body to meet the, the terms of the agreement that they have signed. So I think that, you know, we want to see how the, how they've done a good job of getting federal grants. Those, they seem to be holding, quite honestly. I know people asked about the, the new administration. They seem to be solid, but you never know, right? That thing in two weeks, things can change. But we're monitoring that. And also the private fundraising efforts, we, you know, the trustees will have to assure us that they feel confident. And the backstop for them is there, they have the endowment and they can, they can utilize that endowment to secure a long-term loan. There, and they, they have to look at the ramifications on their operations based on what they have been contributing to the library's operations from that trust, from that trust that they have.
Thank you, Paul. And just a follow-up comment. I understand that the endowment can be used sort of as a safety net.
Yeah.
And I know that you're saying that that would be the library's responsibility to deal with the consequences if that were the case in terms of their operating budget. But that still has an effect on the town and how we're investing our monies if it's being invested into a building that then cannot sustain its operating funds. And like, what does that mean for how we are and are we being fiscally responsible if that is the outcome of the situation? And so I, I don't think that necessarily needs a response, but just that I still have a lot of these concerns.
Sure. I, I think that I'm glad you're articulating them. But I think we also have to recognize the trustees are elected officials, just like you, have the best interest of the town and the library. And they don't want to put the, they, they're, they're the fiscal stewards for the library as well. So I think there's, has to be a certain amount of confidence and trust in that they're going to be doing their job as well. Just like we, we trust all our elected officials, town council, school committee, et cetera. So, yeah, it's a complex project. Things have changed in different ways over the course of the last two years. It's been delayed. It's, you know, been lawsuits, all kinds of things happening with this project.
Anna?
Thank you. So we heard a couple of comments tonight about how we should, the commenter said, stop the library project and give the money to the schools. And I think we have got a bit of a responsibility to be very clear with the public about this particular topic. So my understanding, and I'm seeking confirmation of my understanding or explanations as to why I'm wrong. So my understanding is that, one, the library has deferred capital requests. They haven't made any for a while because of the anticipated renovation and expansion project. And that we don't have updated costs for the necessary renovations beyond estimates due to inflation and, and general, well, increases in cost for building supplies, et cetera. But all prior estimates have had those renovations costing the town more money than the expansion renovation project. And so I looked at, we, we got a, gotten a couple emails suggesting what the priority items might be. And while I take issue with those emails that don't come from folks who have actually examined the building, I looked at the, the old report and I looked at averages for cost increases and, and even doing their minimum suggestions, which were not the initial minimum suggestions for repairs. When you factor in the increases, when you factor in inflation, it still trips that ADA requirement, which I think we as a town have an obligation to, to, to make. We should make our town spaces accessible and that drives up the cost further. So I'd like to know, that's my first point, about the, the renovations only ultimately costing the town more money. And then we also don't get anything from the state. And then second is that the funds that we are using as a town for the library couldn't be reallocated in the way that's being suggestion, suggested, given the type of funds that they are, borrowing CPA grants, et cetera. Could you confirm if what I said is still true to your, to the best of your understanding and provide a bit of an explanation more eloquently worded than what I can do as to whether or not this is a potential funding source for other areas if this project did not go forward? My understanding is that it is not, and I'd like to confirm that.
So I, I think you actually answered your questions accurately and pretty succinctly. So I just, I will confirm if we don't, if this project doesn't move forward for, for whatever reason, the library, in the course of this development, this project, said, we will not submit any capital requests over the last, I forget if it's two or three years. And they didn't. They honored that pledge. So they have not asked for any improvements to the building. There are built up needs for that building that are significant, significant. And they will, we would anticipate that they would come in pretty quickly with their needs to the town seeking funding to do all the work that needs to be done. And it's inevitable that the ADA requirements will be triggered. It's just too much work that needs to be done in that, in that, in that building. You know, I think the, you know, this will, the work will need to extend out multiple years. The money that's being allocated is a, is capital money and the CPA money, which are borrowings. That's not how we fund our operating budget. So I think it's not a stop the library project, give the money to the schools. That money will clear, and more will need to go into the library just to keep the building operational.
I want to add to, on a statement and be very clear, the money for the library hasn't been borrowed. It's not real money. It's not sitting in some bank account. It has to be borrowed. And so it's not like it's available for some other spending.
Yeah, if I can add one other thing, we actually have received the first payment from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners of two plus million dollars. The first thing we would have to do is to return that money with interest. So that was be a much larger request initially. And that's before we spend a dime on the building, we'd have to be returning that money to the MBLC.
Right. Jennifer, did you have another question?
Yes, I understand that the 15.8 million isn't sitting in a bank that could be allocated, you know, someplace else. But the million and a half to 1.6 million that we would be spending to service the debt each year, that would be money that wouldn't have to be allocate, you know, that could be otherwise spent. Is that correct?
Right. But that would be money that would be under the capital side of the budget most likely. And in fact, we would also need to repay the, as I just said, the MBLC, the money, the two plus million dollars that we owe them initially. So I think if you went to look at this long-term and reduce the amount of capital that's, that you were, that the town's putting into capital, like three or four down, years down the road, that's something that you could look at.
Now, but that, that two-point, the, the first installment from the MBLC, we have most of that? I mean.
We have the entire first installment, yes.
So we'd have to, so we have, so the money's there to return. It's the.
No, we've been spending that money on this project. We haven't been, we haven't been spending town money on this project.
You haven't been spending town money?
We've been spending out of the grant.
Right. But could the capital campaign, I mean, if it didn't go forward with the. So none of that would come from the library? Would all?
There's no expectation it would come from the library.
Seeing no other hands, I'm going to suggest we move on to the next topic. The next topic is, was requested. It's a brief presentation on what is a Prop 2 and 1/2 override? And I'm calling on Paul and I think Athena to do this.
Yeah. And I think, I think if Melissa's here, she can jump in too. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa is here as well. Thank you.
If you want to put the slides up, this is a very short presentation. And the concept of this is like, is what, what is a Prop 2 and 1/2 override? I'm not going to get into the advisability or what or anything about it. It's just to give a very, a very, very brief introduction to what it is. So you know, the next slide. And, and there's additional technical information at the end that this is, this presentation is in the town council packet. So if you want more information, there's a lot of information that the State Department of Revenue has. So first slide, next slide. So what Prop 2, Prop 2 and 1/2 is a law that was enacted in 1980, which followed up on the California Prop 13 initiative, which limited the amount of taxes that could be raised by a municipality to 2 and 1/2% per year. Overall, that's the amount of money that we can bring in through property taxes and, and it put a limit on excise taxes as well. And it capped how much your total tax could be. But really, the thing that drives us is the 2 and 1/2% increase plus any new growth. And what is new growth? New growth is those apartment buildings that we see downtown. It's if you put on a, put a swimming pool in or a new deck on your house and it increases the value of your house, that is all considered new growth and we can tax that in addition to the 2 and 1/2%. The, so that, that money is added to the prior year's levy and then until we reach the levy limit. So you can tax more than that 2 and 1/2% if the voters approve it at an election of the voters. Next slide. So an override is, there are two types of, there are multiple types of overrides. One is a general override, which is what we're talking about tonight. But the town has done a debt exclusion override, which is what we did for the elementary school. And that's where the voters said yes to taking the debt that we were going to pay for that, the elementary school building and put that outside the limits of Prop 2 and 1/2. So that doesn't have to come out of our 2 and 1/2%. The voters have said, yes, I'll, I'll pay more out of my pocket. Once that debt is paid over the next 30 years, that tax goes away. So it's not a permanent increase, but it is for the life of the, of the debt. What we're talking about tonight is a general override, which increases the amount of taxes that people pay from, you know, day one forever. It's a permanent increase in the ability to tax. And there, people call these Prop 2 and 1/2 override, general override, operating override, levy limit override, they're all the same thing. It means a, a permanent increase in the taxing authority of the town. Next slide. So I just talked about the debt exclusion. And that's what, this is where it just covers the debt that we have taken on for the school. And again, that will go away. But and just for our, for the purposes of tonight, that debt exclusion is starting to hit tax bills, but the real debt won't be incurred until the summer, when the actual construction starts to take on. And then we'll have to borrow additional funds this, this summer to pay off, to pay for that construction. And then that debt to pay off those, those bonds will happen in the next two or three, next year or two. And then we'll stay for 30 years. So when you, if you want to do an override, it will, you identify the purpose that you want to raise the money for and that it will continue to, the, the funds will need to be, will continue to be brought into the town as part of our operating budget. Again, permanent increase in taxing authority. Next slide. So the, the, you, the town council are the, are, is the body that can place a question on the ballot, on it. It, it can't be done by any other means. Only the town council can put an override question on the ballot. It can be on a regular election ballot, like we have in November. You can call a special election to put it on. And the question that goes on is, is prescribed by the state law and the Department of Revenue. It would be written, helped with the assistance of your town, the town attorney. And it says, very, it tries to be as simple as possible. Shall the Town of Amherst be allowed to assess an additional specific dollar amount in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of general, you know, funds for the town or whatever it is, or for schools or whatever it is, or to, to pay for firefighters, whatever it is that you'd like to do? And it began, and when will it begin? So it's, it's very specific in terms of what people are voting for. Next slide. And this, these are the resources. So I didn't want to get into like, does it make sense? Well, what's the strategy for doing it and all that kind of stuff? So I think that that's really a political discussion and as well as a fiscal discussion. I just say this, Athena or Melissa, if you have anything that you wanted to add to this.
Athena or Melissa, anything? Nope.
Okay.
Athena, all right. Kathy, you have your hand up. Let's take the screen down. Thank you.
Yes, so on one of the first slides, Paul, I think the wording, my understanding is maybe it wasn't correct. It's not that we automatically go up by 2 and 1/2 a year, but we can go up by 2 and 1/2 a year. Towns don't have to, right? I know Amherst, it's just become, we always go up by 2 and 1/2 and then we also have new growth. What happens if a town has not gone up by 2 and 1/2? So this, this segues over to a discussion we're going to have later on regional. So if towns have not been increasing by 2 and 1/2, can they increase by more than 2 and 1/2 without going out for an override?
Yes.
It, it, I think I phrased that the way, you know, they, they have, they only went up by 2% last year or 1 and 1/2 or something. They didn't go up by 2 and 1/2.
So they can, they can increase up to their, their tax levy limit. And I think Melissa, is she here? I don't see. Did you went away on this, on this, Melissa?
I think what you're asking about Kathy is excess levy capacity. And so the town of Amherst typically does not have a ton of excess levy capacity. We have less than 1%. I think we looked at it earlier today. It was in 2025, it was a point, 0.23% of excess levy capacity, which is $157,000, which is typically what happens when we generate the tax bill. There's roundings of pennies and you can't tax to the full 2 and 1/2%. Some communities make decisions to, to hold down that increase to the benefit of the community because they can afford to operate their, their operations in their community without taxing to the full 2 and 1/2% increase. Amherst has not been able to do that in recent years. And I looked back as far as the Department of, Department of Revenue has data statistics and going back to 2007, we have always been under 1% with the exception of 2011. I think we were 1.1.
I, I asked it just, I asked it so everyone here and the public could hear it too, because there are towns in our regional agreement who haven't gone up by 2 and 1/2%. So they're not facing a limit. They don't have to put an override. They have, they have a budget called an excess limit out there. That was my understanding, and I know we don't. We, we've, I can't remember ever going up by less than 2 and 1/2. So even, it's amazing that we have anything in a budget called excess. So that answers it. It's not an automatic 2 and 1/2. You decide whether you need 2 and 1/2 or whether you could live with 2 or something less than 2 and 1/2.
You're correct on that.
Okay. Counselor Hanke.
So I'm going to go the opposite direction than Kathy did. So just giving some hypotheticals here just for ease of numbers. If, say, we went for an override because we were thinking, you know, at a hundred million dollar budget and the, the 5% that the budget increases because of everything that we had, our services, our municipal, our schools, our library services are facing deficits. And so we want to make that up with an override. And we, they're facing deficits for the next year of, say, 3 million or 5 million. And so we ask for a 5 million override. That's, then it's just 2 and 1/2% on that new number. And so if the next year the budget goes up 5%, but everyone's deficit really sort of needs to see an operating budget go up 7 or 8%, you don't add 10 million the next year, you just add 5. So if you want this to last three, four, or five years, you can't just ask for the deficit you're facing in year one. If your budgets are regularly increasing by 7%, but your, your, your expenses are increasing by 7 or 8%, but your revenues are only increasing by 3 or 4, you have to sort of ask for more than that, that difference if you want it to not be in fiscal crisis for multiple years in a row. If you want it to sort of cover multiple years without those crises popping up. So you'd be looking at not necessarily two or three, but you might be looking at 10 or 11.
Yes, yes, that's a choice to be made, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, Pam Rooney.
Mine was similar, I, and I'm not sure I understood the answer. So I'll ask it again in a way that I may be able to understand. Once there has been an increase, let's say we increase by 5, 5 million. The same question, you're, if we did nothing else, would we then revert to, that becomes the new base? And each year it would increase by 2 and 1/2%. Is that correct? Unless we, unless we ask for much more over a longer period of time.
Right, so if our levy limit is, I'll just pick a number, 70 million dollars. That's, if that's, if that's how, what our, what we get, get every year and the, and the voters vote a 5 million dollar increase, it suddenly is 75 million dollars. And then 2 and 1/2 gets applied to the 75.
But it doesn't add another 5 million every, new 5 million every year.
But the 5 million doesn't go away.
Adds to the base, just like this year with the regional school budget, we added the 2%. And then the schools asked us to keep that to the base, even though we initially said not to the base. Okay? Yeah. George.
So what this conversation says to me, and perhaps only to me, is that if you're only looking at the revenue side of the story, this is what you're going to get. You also have to look at the expense side.
Yeah.
This is certainly not meant to be a concluding conversation, but we've, but we wanted to make sure, and Counselor Hanke had asked, that we at least introduce the topic for the discussion today. Okay? All right. So I'm going to just mention, Julian, we actually voted all your requests. Nice of you to join us. You can go back to the university and study. And so the next thing we're doing is going to the proposed university. Oh, are there any questions on those items? We did vote for the Charter Review Committee. No, we look forward to future conversations. Proposed University Drive overlay, this is a first reading. We're going to have a brief presentation, a brief few reports. Did I miss something? You're looking at me puzzled. Oh, okay. And we are joined, I think. I still, is Doug Marshall still in the audience?
He is.
Yes, he is. Oh, my God. Hi, Doug. Sorry.
Good evening.
I warned you when I gave you the timing of the agenda that you shouldn't believe it. It was fiction. Okay, so we're going to start with a very brief presentation, about two minutes worth with David. And do we have Nate Malloy? David?
We're checking. Why don't you go ahead with Doug?
I think we should just go ahead with Doug. So this is something that the Planning Board proposed through staff. And then the Planning Board held their hearings, CRC held their hearings, and it went through GOL as well. So let's just begin with Doug Marshall, who is chair of the Planning Board.
Okay. Let's see, I think I just froze there, but, okay. I was not expecting to make a presentation tonight. I'm here to represent the board if there are questions about the board's deliberation. I guess I will say that we started working on this, I think it was late last spring. And we spent most of the summer working on it before it was referred to council. And then we've had a number of hearings during this past fall. So it's been the better part of a year trying to get here. We thought that this area was an area that would be least controversial for the town in terms of allowing greater density and that it was an ideal for place for more housing in that it has good bus service to the university. It has the grocery store and the post office. And it's, it's a place where if you were going to be car free in Amherst, this might be one of the best places to be. So it's not geared specifically at students, but we are absolutely willing to be, for it to be majority students. And the thing, the thought was that if the students are in that area, they're not trying to push people out of their single family houses. So I'll stop there.
I see that Nate's joined us. So David, did you have anything you wanted to say to be, to introduce Nate? And or just have Nate give us a very, very brief? And perhaps you would like us to show the map?
Sure, I, I guess I'll jump in. If I can share my screen, I'll show the map. Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. The, this is an overlay district, so it, you know, essentially as the name implies, it floats over what is the base zoning district. And so what the existing office park and limited business remains. And this is a voluntary district where if someone was proposing a mixed use building along University Drive between Amity Street and Route 9, they would need to follow the overlay. It has its own definition for what's mixed use, dimensional standards, design guidelines and open space guidelines. And so that's, you know, that, that's kind of it in a nutshell. You know, and it, the Planning Board and CRC held concurrent hearings. They went through as the same document. And so there's two versions in the packet tonight, and there's only minor changes between the two. The Planning Board in Article 2, which is where a district is described, there's a paragraph that describes it and says, for emphasis, including undergraduate housing. So, you know, the overlay is meant to expand economic opportunities and housing. And the Planning Board liked the phrase, including undergraduate housing. The CRC removed that in Article 2. It's also removed in the purpose section. That's what the CRC recommended. And the only other change is how parking would be screened from adjacent residential properties down in the design guideline. So essentially the overlay language between the Planning Board and CRC, which was recommended to council, is the same except for those three minor changes. And so that, you know, they were all in agreement with what they were looking at. So in terms of the overlay, if this is visible for everyone, Amity Street is on the north here, on the top of the screen. Here's University Drive. It's approximately, you know, about half a mile in length. Here's North Hampton Road. And it's the office park and limited business areas on either side of University Drive. And so while the Planning Board and CRC had their hearings and discussions, this was the preliminary boundary. It hasn't changed any. There was discussions about increasing it, but it remained the same. Most of the discussion was on the standards. And, you know, what could be modified to take into account public comment in terms of setbacks or reducing height along Charles Lane? So there's some provisions there. The area near Big Y is now 100% ground floor retail or non-residential space. And so that wasn't originally proposed, but that's now in the overlay. So everything south of the post office, if it was redeveloped on the Western Quadrant here, would be 100% ground floor, non, non-residential. And that's an idea to try to incentivize having larger commercial and retail spaces. It does allow six stories. So it's, it's something where, you know, the Planning Board felt that it was an appropriate area to have this height. There's flexible parking regulations because there's not many neighborhoods nearby where someone could park and walk. And so really, it's up to the developer to propose what's the right parking ratios. They have to provide a parking study, parking management plan. And so it would, you know, everything's by site plan review, just mixed use buildings. And a lot of this will be discussed through the permitting process with the Planning Board.
I'm going to go next to CRC. Pam Rooney.
Thanks, and I think both Doug and Nate have covered the bulk of what we all discussed. I think the CRC contribution to this is that we in fact did want to note that this was going to be a very good area to encourage growth of housing that would induce students to move to that area instead of moving into stable neighborhoods. But we took out the words that it was housing specifically for, for undergraduate students. One of the things that CRC added that was fairly important was the set, increased setback from existing residential, given that these are six, could be six story buildings that needed a little more of a buffer between existing residential and the potential six story buildings. Nate discussed the 100% use of, of the ground floor for commercial uses in the south end of the, of the district, which includes the groceries, the CVS, the post office, the healthcare services that are really critical. We did not want to somehow entice an existing service to demolish their buildings and build the very more, much more lucrative residential offerings. So we kept it as 100% commercial use in that area to discourage. I think that kind of sums up the bulk of the conversations that we had. And I would support obviously moving forward on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anna, GOL.
Thank you to Nate for joining us at GOL for our conversation. Much appreciated. GOL voted this clear, consistent and actionable. Four in favor, none opposed, one absent.
Are there any questions or comments? And let me just note that this will come before the council for a final vote on April 7. So if there's anything people need cleared up between now and then, this is when you need to ask for it. Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to know what efforts are going to be made to encourage senior housing or workforce housing development in this area. I, I understand that the, from what I've read, it's largely just going to be designed for student housing, which means that most of the stores are going to be there to serve the students and not to serve the town residents. My wife actually was interested in one of the new buildings in town. I won't mention which one and asked if she could see the apartments there. And the person representing the, the landlord said, oh, no, you don't want to live there. That's student housing. So she was discouraged from even attempting to go in and look at the apartments. So I, I, I have a great concern that this is just going to become another set of student housing and it's not going to benefit the town other than some, you know, hope of reducing the number of LLCs that are purchasing homes somewhere in, in Amherst.
Okay. Andy? Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I guess I, I thought I would take a stab at answering that. This overlay does not prescribe the demographic that the housing will be designed for. It simply sets out the potent, the possible uses. And mixed use can have any, any, any human can occupy a mixed used residential area. So there is no slanting within the bylaw toward students or toward seniors or toward any other demographic. Each, if this gets used, and there's no guarantee it will, each developer will assess the market and decide who they want to. each developer will assess the market and decide who they want to build for. And, or they may just do what they consider to be generic layouts of units and see who shows up. So I don't think that it's fair to say that this is going to or intended to only cater to students.
I, I hear what you said, but it's not what you write in your reports.
Well, I can't speak for the reports.
Andy?
I'll follow up on that one, but then I want to get to a different issue, actually. But the follow up is that I think that the question ultimately is going to depend partly on the design of the apartment units that are provided within the area. That if they're a number, if it's, if the building is dominated by multiple bedroom apartments, then it's more likely to be attractive and marketed to students. If they're two bedroom apartments with substantial living space, then it would be more likely that a family that had been in a house and is looking to stay in Amherst would be more likely to look for it. And there's nothing that I could see that tends to favor that. It's sort of left to whatever is proposed. But my issue that I had originally raised my hand about is, I was a little bit confused by the CRC report answer that we were, our report that we received. And that has to do with retail. Because it was my understanding that the retail that is including everything all the way down to university, through, on the University Drive, all the way down to College Street is now a part of the proposed district. And that would include then the Big Y property. And if it includes the Big Y property, then it seems that potentially the retail is going to be limited by essentially the space that's on the first floor of any building that's built, minus whatever is needed for servicing entry to the apartment buildings. And that it would be unlikely that you would ever again see a retail establishment with the scope of services that are provided in a large supermarket such as exists on the property now. And I, I guess that is that really what the community wants?
Counselor Hanke, did you raise your hand because you wanted to address this? All right, Kathy?
I would like to build on what Andy said. I, I was a newcomer to CRC, but I did get to vote on this. And I raised the concern. And I actually said, can we carve out? Can we have the overlay stop short of the boundary that, that is the Big Y? And basically, everyone else on the committee said no because that restricts it and that carves it up. You know, this is at the option of a developer. The also, other response is the Big Y has a 20-year lease. I think leases can be broken. And I worry that the backside of the Big Y is goodwill, which is if supermarkets are low margin, goodwills are even lower margin for what they are. So I did question whether we couldn't do the overlay and stop it at the border. And the answer was apparently that's too restrictive. So I, and the other point I wanted to make in response to Bob, I, or a question. My understanding is if it were, these were called apartment buildings rather than mixed use, we'd have some mix of the units. With the mixed use building in the apartment side, could they all be efficiencies? Or do they have to be ones, twos, threes? Do they have to have a mix of the type of units? Like the Spring Street is mainly efficiencies with a few one bedrooms. So, and the one, all of them are small. So you're not going to get someone moving out of their house to get to a very small efficiency. So what on the mixed use side of the residential, is there a requirement that be, it be a mix of size of units? I just, I just don't know the law on mixed use well enough to know how that works.
David, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Lynn. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And, and first thank, you know, Nate and the planning staff, certainly the planning board for bringing this forth through the process through CRC. Just a couple of comments. One is, you know, I think we all recognize the state, the region, the town. We're in a housing crisis here. And this is just one effort of many that is needed. We have to keep moving forward. I guess I'm, I'm hoping that we, we not kind of hyper focused on this one initiative that the planning board has been, and other boards and committees have been working on for, for many, many months. It has taken us a long time to get to this point. I know right now the staff and the Housing Trust are completing the housing production plan. That will give us more information to Bob's point about kind of what, what is needed in terms of market? Because of course, you know, as, as Doug mentioned, this is not prescriptive. It doesn't say what kind of housing. Really, the market determines what kind of housing. So the more we can offer opportunities for creative developers to come to Amherst and, and work with our, our planning staff and with boards and committees, the more opportunity we'll have for all different kinds of housing. And then lastly, you know, I think we all just need to work together, roll up our sleeves. We need to look at more of these creative options around town. And I think we've, we've had those conversations. Certainly, the planning board is, is looking creatively at Lower Main Street. We've talked about some creative options for additional downtown density. But this is just one of many that we need to move forward on. And I think the planning board and, and staff and CRC have heard a lot of, you know, good comments. They've made adjustments where, where needed. And, and I hope we'll move this forward and then get, get started right away on the next one. We, we, we need to keep looking creatively. Our zoning doesn't, by and large, encourage more growth in the places that we want it to be, which is typically in our village centers. And University Drive, although not officially a village center, as Doug said, it is a, a very appropriate place. I think we all agree for more density in terms of housing and mixed use. So, thank you.
Counselor Hanke?
I agree with everything our assistant town manager just said. This council has talked a lot about wanting to create housing and ensure that there is housing available for all mixed use of, a mixed variety of ages, of family sizes, of income levels. And then we seem to get in our own way by getting too concerned about what some zoning change might do. And then we don't do anything. And then we continue to talk. This, I will say, I would love to see this go even farther. It doesn't go as far, I, I pushed hard at CRC to, against the residential buffering setbacks that were added in. Yet, it does some of what we need it to do. And we have to look at it in some sense as a compromise in a place that we should be looking at building more mixed use buildings. I believe the compromise that we focused a lot on and the planning board focused a lot on at the Big Y Plaza and the CVS Plaza, we've heard, we listened, and we did what we thought was right to write into this proposal what will protect the major retail that is down there. We cannot guarantee that it will because there is no guarantee of anything. But I also want to remind people, a mixed use building isn't just one floor of retail and has to be the rest residential. A mixed use building can just have one residential unit in it, and the whole rest of the thing can be commercial. So we don't know what 10 years down the line this might look like and what's needed. But we need to do something. And this is a very good start in a location that is ripe for walkability and where people could want to live because of what it is near, including the grocery stores and other shopping. And I do want to push back one other thing that a prior counselor said tonight of student housing does not benefit the town. And I, or housing that houses students and that this is focused on students would not benefit the town. I'm not wording it the way it was worded. But I think it's a wrong thing to say that a certain type of person living in our town is not a benefit to our town. And that we should not be characterizing residents as certain residents as not being beneficial if they're living in certain areas of town. That, that we should be more welcoming as a town. And that all of our residents, as a university town, and as a town that attracts retirees, have a benefit and do benefit our entire community.
Jennifer?
Yes, I guess in response, if I, to Bob's question, I think when the planning board and when CRC was creating this, we did, you know, we saw because of the proximity to the university, for all the reasons people said, it was, there would probably be student interest in living there, but we hope that other people would live there as well. And I think how successful we are in that, as Andy said, as each project comes before the planning board or the ZBA, that maybe they can work with the developers to have, I mean, I think having three and four bedroom units are terrific for families. But if they're priced at $1,000 or $1,200 per bedroom, no family is going to be able to live there. So it's trying to strike that balance. I know with the Sunset Fearing Townhouse development, in conversations with the developer, they did scale back the number of four bedrooms because they shared how much, what the price range would be for those. And it would be prohibitive for anybody except people sharing the rent. So, you know, the hope is that there will be a mix of residents here. But again, it's whether the, the, the families and the workforce are priced out because the price point's just too high.
Pat DeAngelis?
Thank you. Also addressing Bob's concern, if you look at North Square, the development there, it's mixed use buildings. They are one, two, and three bedroom units that range from 650 square feet to 1,110 square feet. There is a playground, there are coffee shops, there's restaurants, there's a, there's a, there is a general store, an art gallery and other things. So I think that we do a lot of fear mongering. But what I see there, and I hated that development when it started to go in, I must admit. I don't think it's beautiful, but it's working for families and students and single people of all stripes. And it does include affordable units.
Counselor Walker?
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. And I do want to say that generally, overall, I do support this initiative because I do think if we want to think about addressing the housing crisis, there's going to be a number of things that we have to do. And I think kind of like what Mandy Jo said, this is just one of them. And I do, though, have some concerns about what kind of requirements we can put on or like how we can work with developers if this were passed and we are moving forward into building new housing units and how we make sure that those units are available for families. And I just wanted to speak for a minute about what the actual experience of renting a property in this town is because I think that seems to be very amiss in this conversation. It is extremely challenging for a family to find somewhere to rent in this town. And I've had similar experiences myself, like Bob mentioned, where I have looked at places that are two, three bedroom apartments that say, we are not going to rent to you because there's too many students here and you have kids. But they're not apartments that are supposed to only be for students. But, you know, they're looking out for me because they don't want me to be around people who are partying all the time. Or the Riverside Apartments behind Cumbes and North Amherst will tell you, you can't rent there if you're an undergrad. And so even though I'm a resident, when I was an undergrad, they wouldn't allow me to rent there because I was simply an undergrad. So there are so many obstacles that people in this town have to jump through to find housing that I do think it is important to consider who we are building the housing for. And with this specific initiative, what part of the housing crisis we're trying to address? If this is just simply increasing housing stock, then that's simple. But if we're looking at like housing inequity or any of those other kinds of issues that exist within the housing crisis, then there needs to be other measures also implemented with this initiative, like in terms of housing caps, bedroom availability, affordability, and all of those other things.
Counselor Ryan?
So we have a housing crisis and we have a revenue crisis. And this proposal addresses both. I'd like to echo what the assistant town manager said and what Counselor Hanke said and address my comments to the planning board. I hope this is the first of a number of future proposals that will continue to look in places in Amherst where this kind of development can take place. And we can continue to address the housing crisis and the revenue crisis.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that I'm not opposed to this development. I think it's good for the town. I just want to make sure that we consider the types to try to encourage seniors and workforce members to live there. That's all. I, I wasn't suggesting we shouldn't do it. And I think it's a good place for this kind of development, actually. But I, I, my concern is that we make sure it's available for everyone.
Are there any other questions or comments? We'll return to this on April 7th for the second vote, which allows us to make sure that it's done within the 90-day period at the close of the hearings. So we're going to go on to the contract authorization Public Education Transportation Services. There's a memo in your packet. It explains that this is an effort to electrify some of our school buses. And it requires a 10-year lease. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires that if you go for any lease past three years, the town council has to approve it. So I'm going to make a motion and seek a second, and then we'll go to questions. The motion is to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign a contract for up to 10 years for Public Education Transportation Services. Is there a second?
Second, Ernie.
Okay, questions? Counselor Hanke?
So I have some that are kind of basic and others that are a little more involved. The first one is, it seems like this is for an elementary school leasing agreement. But our superintendent of schools is a superintendent of three different districts. Is our motion clear enough to reference which district we are authorizing? Which superintendent we are authorizing to sign a lease of up to 10 years? And then questions on, would these buses also be used for regional transportation? For regional district transportation and, and not just elementary transportation? And if so, what is the intergovernmental budget transfer for those costs looking like? Or are there agreements with that? And then my third question relates to the regional agreement document itself. And I know this is elementary, but I'm going to read the section on transportation that I have questions about. Because the Regional Agreement on Transportation in Section 10A says, "The district, regional district shall provide transportation for pupils attending the regional district schools as well as pupils attending the elementary schools of member towns and in further accordance with the policy of the regional school committee. In providing such transportation, the district may contract with one or more of the participating towns for the provision of such transportation once daily to and from the regional district schools for the pupils residing in such town and entitled to such transportation. The costs of providing transportation for pupils attending the regional district schools shall be included in the district operating costs. The costs of providing transportation for pupils attending the elementary schools of member towns shall be billed separately to each member town annually." So I guess my question is, how does that, that paragraph in the regional school agreement relate to the elementary school superintendent signing a 10-year lease for elementary transportation when it seems like there needs to be an agreement between the regional school and the elementary? When it seems like there needs to be an agreement between the regional school and the elementary school districts for the elementary school decide, or something? Like, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out the scope of that regional agreement and how it relates to this request for authorization? And how all that's been working?
I'm going to call on Paul Bachmann, but I also want to note that our Superintendent of Schools is with us tonight, as well as the interim finance director for the schools. Paul?
But it really should be Shannon or Dr. Z who would answer. But the contract that I saw is between the elementary schools and the bus company. So it was coming to the council because it's an elementary school contract. But, um, Dr. Z or Shannon, if you want to answer the other questions that the counselor had.
Yep. Um, so our, uh, the buses that we have for Amherst, or for, for all of the schools have been purchased, um, through, uh, Amherst. And, uh, what we do come end of the year is we have these bill back entries that we do that proportion the cost between the three districts. And that's how we've been managing this process. It's a pretty intense spreadsheet, um, but we, and that's been historically what has been done. It's not something that I started initiative of, I'm just following the, what we've done in the past.
Dr. Z, did you want to comment?
No, Shannon did a great job explaining the process.
Thank you. Bob Hegner?
Yeah, my understanding from, I guess it was JCPC, was that this bus would, well, all the buses are owned by the elementary school. And this bus would only stay in Amherst because it doesn't have the range to go beyond that. So, I mean, if you're transporting people for the regional schools, or if you're going to a sporting event, you can't use an electric bus because it just doesn't have the range.
Please, Counselor Hanke?
So does that mean that when that bus is used for regional student, regional district transportation, even though those are Amherst students, that the region is billed for that cost? And essentially, there's an intergovernmental transfer between the budget at the region to the elementary school budget for those costs? Am I accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. It's not a, it's not the budget that's moved, it's the expense that's, uh, billed to the other districts.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Yes.
Does the motion need changed to clarify? Because it just says the superintendent of schools for up to 10 years. Do we need to change it? Is that clear enough that it's for our elementary school was one of my questions?
Paul, did you have any question on that? Or any advice?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I wrote the motion, so I think, I would, I think it's pretty clear. But if you want to add words to make it clear, that's fine.
And did you want to amend it? Or friendly amendment?
So I just, I mean, the superintendent is the signer of the agreement, you know, legally. So that's who you're, and that, and you're letting the district enter into a 10 year lease contract. It just does not verify the lease document. It does not say, uh, procurement follow, where anything was followed. We don't get into that level of detail. It's just like, if they want to go in this direction, do have they, do they have the authority to move in this direction?
Would it be proper to say the superintendent of the Amherst schools or the Amherst elementary school? I, I just, it's the Amherst School District, right?
It, in the memo, it says Amherst School District. And we're, we're all supposed to know that is the elementary school as opposed to the region.
Yeah, the motion doesn't say that though. So I was wondering if the motion should say Superintendent of Amherst Schools.
To authorize the superintendent of the Amherst schools or Amherst Elementary Schools?
What's the formal name of the Amherst District?
Amherst. It doesn't say elementary, it's just the Amherst School District.
All right, so that the, uh, friendly amendment is as follows. To authorize the superintendent of the Amherst schools to sign a contract for up to 10 years for Public Educational Transportation Services. I made the motion, that's fine with me. Who was the second? Pam, thank you.
Fine. Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Moving on, we're going to move to a vote. Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Hello, Lord.
Aye.
Uh, Pam Rooney?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Tob?
Yes.
Counselor Wa- Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothian?
Aye.
Anna, uh, Counselorete?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmerz?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And good luck with all those electric school buses. We are now going to move on to the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Assessment Method. And, um, I'm going to just begin by saying, first of all, I want to thank the Regional School Committee for voting a budget and assessment method, and officially sending that information to the town manager before the required date. As, as was explained to the Finance Committee, this was done based upon a conversation with the Regional School Committee Chair and Acting Finance Director prior to their vote on Friday, March 14th. And with that, I'm going to call on Paul Bachmann to speak to the memo.
Thank you, Lynn. So there are three things that the school committee voted, and that, that actual motion is in your packet as a, uh, I think it's attachment four, I think something like that. So the, the typically, the, um, this Regional School District votes an operating budget. And I, I usually think of this as the size of the pie, the size of the budget. The assessment method, which is how that pie gets divided up and money comes from the four different towns. And then they have a request for borrowing for capital. Um, and so those three actions were forwarded to, to me, and I am passing along to you the assessment method. And the reason for that is that the operating budget needs three of the four member communities to approve it. So that there isn't, if, if three of the four member communities approve the budget, they have a budget. The assessment method is a, a assessment method that's different than what's in the Regional School District Agreement. And all four communities have to approve it. Amherst is more flexible in its timing. And, um, the request from the district was, if you are going, please consider this early in this process, let us know if you're going to approve it or not. Because we have three town meetings coming up at the end of April and early May. And those dates can't be moved very easily by those, the three other communities. So, um, the request to you was to look at the assessment method. When we have looked at the assessment method, it, it, that was voted by the Regional School Committee, it asks for a 6.5% increase from the town of Amherst. This is well above what the, the financial guidelines have provided for in your, in the guidelines that the council voted. So I'm asking you to reject this alternative method because it's outside the guidelines. And the other reason is that if we were, if you were to say yes to a 6.5% increase, it would have a very dramatic impact on the libraries, the schools, and the elementary schools in terms of how much we could afford to provide to our other three components of our town budget. So, um, the, um, and so one of the things we asked the, uh, district to do was to, what if we took the actual, um, budget that, that, that the school committee voted? The 37 point, and you can see it on, uh, um, attachment one. They voted a, a budget of $37,077,171. And what if you just applied the current regional assessment method to that? That would make, if, and that's, if you look at attachment two, that would be an Amherst share, instead of going up 6.5%, would go up 4.81%. And that's a number actually we could work to get to, I think. We would, we're at 4% now, and we could work to get, to meet the budget request of the Regional School District. Um, but if, if this regional, if this assessment method is adopted, it really, um, just makes it very, very difficult for me to give you a, a balanced budget for the entire town. And it's not, the regional assessment method means, um, it's, it's really subsidizing the other three towns. It's not more money going to the schools or not, it's about how that pie is divided up. It's about how much of the, of the budget that the school committee voted is coming from each town. And my recommendation to you is that the town shouldn't pay more than its fair share. Every town should pay its fair share. I hope that is clear.
You have also recommended to us a motion. And the motion is to reject the following amendment to the Regional School District Agreement. Replace Section J as follows. For fiscal year 2026 only, the assessment shall be allocated to the member towns in accordance with the per pupil method found on Section, uh, Roman numeral 6E of the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Agreement. If any member town's assessment based on the regional agreement method increases or decreases more than 6.5% from their fiscal year 2025 assessment, the fiscal year 2026 assessment shall be limited to a 6% change, provided that the requirements of the minimum local contribution are still met, or take any other action relative thereto. Other comments? Kathy Shane?
I'll second that motion if you were making a motion.
I was.
I'll second.
It's now been seconded. Kathy?
Have you, have you made the motion, Lynn?
We have.
And was it seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I want to speak in favor of the motion. I think the regional school assessment method is a good agreement, and it is the agreement among the four towns. So I'm just talking about the assessment method. And as Paula's just said, if that assessment method was applied, you would have the, the division of the budget be different among the towns than what was proposed and voted on by the regional school. The impact of moving it away as they proposed would shift money onto Amherst taxpayers and off other towns' taxpayers as we move away from the assessment method. And just, it's a complicated method, but if you think of it, its core is it, the number of students each of us has in the school system drives this, and there are a bunch of other factors. So if we're about 79% of the kids, we pay about 79%. And I'm simplifying it, and that's the way the other pieces work. So staying with that assessment method could, if it was applied to a, a different budget, still yield more for the schools, the regional school system, if all towns paid according to the assessment method. And I've just worked out a variety of numbers. On the flip side, what was proposed to us would leave almost no money for the elementary school increase. And I think we, that's coming down the budget, the, the line on it. So it, it would squeeze, it's a substantial increase, so in the $500,000 range. So it's not small. So staying in, within the range we were talking about might be a bit more, but I think we can afford it. So I think the regional, rejecting the proposed shift and asking the school, Regional School Committee to come back to us is the appropriate thing to do, which is what the town manager has recommended.
Counselor Hanke?
So as we discuss this, we cannot forget that the Amherst School Committee has not yet voted its budget, but on Thursday night of last week, asked the superintendent to bring back only budgets that had year over year increases of over 5.5% or 6%. I think it was 5.59%. Whereas our guidelines right now stand at 4% year over year for them. I'm going to say what Kathy just said a slightly different way. The $320,000 difference between using the regional agreement method, in other words, rejecting this requested amendment or accepting it. Rejecting it would, would lower the, potentially lower the assessment without lowering the regional school budget by 320. It would have lowered Amherst's assessment by about 320,000. That difference essentially, if we do not reject the modification, directly reduces the property taxes in Pelham, Leverett, and Chutesbury on the backs of Amherst taxpayers. If we reject the amendment, it might allow us to use that money to increase the elementary and our municipal budgets. But if we, and without reduction in the regional budget from what they had passed potentially, as long as the other three towns step up and use their excess levy capacity to fund the region at the level the Regional School Committee passed their budget at, and the agreement that we all as four towns agreed to says, the share of the pie should be split. At that number that the budget has been passed by the Regional School Committee, it would require approximately 150,000. And using the assessment, the regional agreed assessment method, not the amended method, would require about 150,000 above what our current budget guidelines say. I'm prefacing or presaging a conversation a little later tonight. But we can probably get there based on other conversations and other proposals that have been there. I don't see how we go up another $320,000 without severe, above that 150 with, and, and still be able to consider meeting what is expected to be passed at tomorrow night's Amherst School Committee meeting without basically level funding municipal services. Not level services, not anything, no increase year over year at all. Because the entire 4% increase that we're looking at in our current projections for the municipal is about $1 million. And between the two requests at what I'm, I'm guessing the regi, this Amherst School Committee might vote tomorrow night, and what they voted and asked us to amend a regional agreement to do is about $1 million. So I am going to vote to reject the amendment.
Andy?
Yeah, I guess I'll start just by, um, asking, uh, a simple question just to make sure that, um, where I think we are. And that is that the scenario requested in, that's shown in attachment two is a strict application of the, excuse me, of what's in the regional agreement now. And if that is true, then I have to go back to the multiple years of committees that I sat on that had to do with negotiating what the, uh, assessment method would be. And, you know, it was not Amherst that was the one that sought the change to what was agreed. But, uh, we did in the end, uh, say okay. And, uh, then the thought was to put a cap on that would be the, um, a way of making sure that the increase did not hit an unconscionable level for any single town in a single year. But it was not with the thought that we were going to come up with equal amounts across the board. And it seems that there's been a, um, a change in the way that the, uh, as the, that the caps have been applied that has effectively gotten us to this equal funding per town. And that was not what we were talking about back when we adopted the method. So I'm in a, I'm in favor of this. I'm a little bit, uh, you know, concerned because it doesn't, I think we need to go back and get into the question of what is fair to a town that's being asked to pay a very high increase, uh, for example, Pelham and Leverett. But, uh, I think we, we need to talk about that as a four, as four towns and not come in just automatically to an even amount.
Anna?
Y- your hand is up, Lynn. You can go first.
No, please, go ahead.
Oh, I'll, I'll drop mine. That's fine. Go ahead.
I, my hand's done. I'll wait.
Okay. I just want to go back last year. Last year, as this year, we will have three votes. One vote is the assessment method, one vote is the budget, and one vote is capital. The only question before us tonight is the assessment method.
The only question before us tonight is the assessment method. And the assessment method that has been put before us continues to perpetuate the fact that the taxpayers of Amherst subsidize the other contributing towns. We're not trying to cut the school budget. We're basically trying to make sure we protect our taxpayers. That's all. So I am for this, to reject it. And I totally support the fact that at some point we may have to all get together in another regional meeting, which is fine, because that's the body that should do that, to talk about how we do this in the future. But it is time for Amherst to basically say, we're not paying your share. That's all we're saying. Anna?
I I literally have not unmuted myself on my computer for two years. It is 10 o'clock. I'm so tired. I'm sorry, everybody. I usually am so good. Okay. I'm struggling to see how we can make this decision before seeing the full picture with the elementary schools. And I would like some clarity on why we should be deciding this tonight versus in two weeks when we've got an actual picture of where we're going with schools. And I'm willing to be swayed on that, but I I would like to know because I'm I don't see how we can make an informed decision on this tonight. Paul?
Yeah, so I the I think it's to, if the town of Amherst is going to reject it in a meeting with the regional school district chair and interim finance director, they said, if you're going to reject it, please do it sooner. So the school, the regional school district committee can go back and come up with a different method or stick with the the current method so that there's time for them to get something different in front of the other three towns before their town meeting. So bringing this up now early, which we appreciated this regional school committee voting so early and for this superintendent to delivering it very quickly, like two days later, it was in is they were, they really wanted to get a read from the Amherst Town Council as to what you were going to say about this this assessment method. And they can be separated. I understand the concern. But we don't, I can't forgive you the regional school district budget not knowing what the assessment method is nor not knowing what the elementary schools, what the impact will be on the elementary schools, the town and the library.
I'm going to, excuse me, I'm going to raise my hand quickly and add to what I said. And one of the things that this also accomplishes is to give us a little more flexibility on the elementary school side to bridge the gap of the transition to the new configuration of the two new element, of the two elementary schools. Are there any other questions or comments? Anna?
Mandy raised her, okay. I'm just honestly, I'm just struggling to see why I shouldn't use my right to postpone for this. I really don't see how I get that this helps us to inform the elementary school budget, but until we know what we're looking at broadly for schools, I I I have not been convinced yet. I understand that it makes life a bit easier for folks when we give them more time. I really, that does make sense to me. But I don't see why prior to, one, also prior to having a conversation that I would like to have later in this meeting, hopefully after this, and two, prior to seeing the request for elementary increase, that could shift how we look at this regional agreement. And I, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm, I have not yet seen that. So I'd I'd like to hear from other people.
Counselor Hanke. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, you had your hand up. So I'm going to.
Yeah, I think we do know what the school committee voted in terms of the budget. You have that number in front of you. We do know this assessment method and you know the capital. The key piece to for the town, for the, for me as town manager, is the assessment method at this moment in time. And I think it's a courtesy to the school committee. And Dr. Z can weigh in if you, if you'd like to, Dr. Z, obviously, can say if if time is of the essence for this.
Dr. Z?
Good evening, everyone. And I'm going to clarify which hat I'm holding at the present moment, right? Because I know there's a conversation on both budgets that I'm aware of. So I'll start off with why I'm, why I was invited this evening as the regional superintendent and say that timeliness is is of the essence here. The reason why we met and we asked Paul to bring forth the assessments, assessment method is because we are trying to avoid reaching June and hitting that 112 budget. We're trying to avoid and and we're also trying to make sure that we can plan adequately. This impacts the livelihood of our regional employees, our teachers, our par educators, our staff. And so we need to know what our next steps are. And so for this to move forward, we need the four towns to agree on the change in the assessment method. If you are unwilling to to move forward with this, then we need to know and plan accordingly. So we can call forth a four towns meeting and have all four towns come in and make the adequate decision for our children. At the end of the day, that's what it calls for. As a superintendent of the Amherst Elementary School District, I will say that on Wednesday evening, we will be presenting what the committee has access to present, which is a 5.59 and a 6% option. Again, that that again puts forth for us to look at timeliness in terms of staff, in terms of the programming for children. So I understand what the council has in front of them. But as a regional superintendent, I'm going to say that we are not trying to destroy any budgets. What we are trying to do is put forth adequate programming and continue to build on the lineage and history that Amherst Regional Public, Amherst Pelham Regional Public School had for a very long time. It's just that as things have progressed, we moved away from our assessment method without a plan as how to get back there. And now we're in a place where we need all four towns to commit to adequately funding our schools. So that's that's my take on this.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Counselor Walker, I'm, I didn't mean to skip over you earlier. Please, go ahead.
It's okay. I just raised my hand and I'm still almost trying to compile my thoughts here because I also feel like I don't have enough information to make this decision right now. But I feel like if what we're talking about is the assessment method and not the amount over, that wouldn't the school committee be reasonably positioned to make reasonable recommendations to change the assessment method? We we talk about committees being positioned to be experts in what they are elected to do when we're talking about the library. And so why are we not talking the same way about the school committee who I'm sure in good faith is trying to make the best decisions for the families and the children in our community? And we just had hours of public comment from families and taxpayers who said things like they came here and were willing to pay higher taxes for better schools. So it feels amiss to say now we want to protect our taxpayers by doing X, Y, and Z when we also haven't have they, but you said they voted a budget, but did they vote a budget? Is that tomorrow? So I just feel like I'm missing sort of pieces to the puzzle to make this decision right now. And I understand time is of the essence. So I'm hoping that Dr. Z might be able to talk a little bit more to that.
Dr. Z?
Hi, I just wanted to say that our school committee chair is present in in the hall this evening to to speak as well. So I would like to give her an opportunity to to answer Council, Councilor Walker's questions around the committee.
I've just invited her to come up.
Okay, thanks.
With a wave of the hand. This is Sarah Best Kenny, who's the chair of the regional school committee. Welcome, Sarah Best.
Can you say your question again? Be real close, snuggle in. Okay. Counselor Walker, can you please repeat your question?
Um, yeah, I don't know if it was a very targeted question, but I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more to the actual assessment method and how we're we're coming to this decision here, like what is the plan, right? Because I trust that the school committee are experts of in the needs of what our, what our school, children and building and facilities need. And so there's a reason we're here, right? Like, there's a reason why you all are choosing to abandon the old assessment method and to come to this. And so if you can speak a little bit more towards what those intentions are and what the goal is here. And I missed the meeting where you all voted on the budget. So maybe connecting it to that might also be helpful just because I missed that.
Sure, I will do my best. So we looked at several budget scenarios that, over several days, that Shannon and Dr. Z brought forward to us. When it came time to voting on a budget, we looked at three mostly. And we went with the one that we felt served our children to the best of our ability, that also had the best potential of being passed by the four towns. So we were doing the best for our kids with the information we were provided while still making, you know, very unfortunate and large cuts that are not in the best interest of our children. Because cuts are not, not because we're not doing the best we can.
Counselor Hanke? I'm sorry, Counselor Walker, did you have a follow up?
All right, yeah, just a really quick. And so what would be the impact on the school committee budget process if this assessment method were rejected?
So if the assessment method is rejected, we have no budget. We need all four towns to agree on anything that is outside of the regional agreement method. And we need three of the four towns to agree on the number of the budget, the dollars. So if this assessment method is rejected by the town council, then we are back to square one.
Shannon Burnett, she has her hand up. Shannon is the interim finance director for the schools.
I just wanted to add that if it was if it's rejected by one town, we, then we have to go back to the drawing board. But what that means is there, the other towns have their town meeting days already scheduled. And if we didn't have something to put forth to them at those meetings, to my understanding is it's very difficult. There's certain timeframes and things that they have to do in order to host another town meeting. So we we want to be more proactive and less reactive. And if we get to June where we don't have this budget, we would move to the 112 budget, which uses our prior year's operating budget. And it's also has a lot to do with our cash flow, which could ultimately be detrimental. And we'd be looking at even more serious reductions if we weren't, weren't able to have something passed by then. And if we didn't have something passed by December, the DESI would then take over financially. And and how how that part works, I'm not fully clear on. But there are severe consequences that we would have to deal with if we did not get something approved by June 30. So we're trying to be more proactive in this situation so we don't end up in a terrible reactive situation.
Can I have a quick follow up to that?
Yes, please.
So another piece that happens if we end up at the 112 budget, we have lots of, our contracts all have dates in which teachers and parents and other professionals in our district need to be notified by whether or not they have jobs. So if we do not have a past budget and we are at the 112 situation, then we will have to have far more cuts. We'll have to lay off and not have, we will be, we will be working on our budget from FY25 for our FY26. So those cuts will be gigantic.
Okay, I'm going to call on Pam Rooney because she's not spoken yet.
The question I had is, it was asked, is what is the impact on the budget? I think I would word it a little differently. What is the impact on the dollar amount of the budget if Amherst, if we voted tonight to reject the proposed assessment method amendment? What what does Amherst, what is the difference in what Amherst would bring to the table is my question.
There's nothing. We have no budget. So okay, so it is all together. There is not an assessment method. We cannot, I can't tell you what the final dollar figure is. And I cannot tell you what the Amherst portion of that is because.
It has to go back to the school committee and they have to act again. And what the reason this is coming before us now is to give them time to do that. Let's see, Paul, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I think just a little bit of clarification is that if the school committee did not, does not recommend an alternative assessment method, it reverts to the regional school agreement. And that's what attachment two shows in the memo. It shows what was the, what the voted budget that this, that the school committee voted, if if you applied the regional school district agreement, which we all have agreed to, without an alternative assessment. And so I think that's a piece of information that might be helpful for the council.
Pat, you had your hand up. Did you take a test?
I was sitting here in my elderly befuddlement. It seemed to me that there is a budget. What we're talking about right now tonight, and I'm really asking for clarification here, I think Paul did it, but there is a budget. It is what you're asking for. And what we're saying as Amherst is, we don't want to, we want the other towns to, I'm assuming, increase the amount that they're paying because they're paying less than we are in essence. So we want to change the assessment method. We're not asking for a change in the budget. So I'm confused by this. We have no budget if. And it's, it does, so I am really confused by that. You have a budget and it will be presented to the towns. And this alternate assessment method would be, or the old assessment method would be returned. And this is what you would have to carry. So it would be up to them to fulfill their portion of it. Is that not?
The the regional school committee voted that assessment method that is presented.
Determines how much a town is paying.
Yeah, with the, with the dollars.
Yes.
Spilled out.
But the budget doesn't change. What you're saying is it's going to cost this much to run the regional school system in FY26. Is that correct? That's what the budget is. And what we're saying basically is we, we want to change the amount of our assessment and share it more with the other towns because they have more flexibility right now. So if those, if the towns want to destroy the budget, they can. But that's not what we're asking them to do. And I don't, I I don't, I don't get the, I don't. I'm sorry, I think I'm correct, you know.
The school committee voted the assessment method that has the dollar figures attached. So if that is all, it it's all together. So if the town council rejects the assessment of it, Shannon, please correct me if I am wrong. If if the town council rejects the assessment method, then because of the way the budget is and the assessment method are tied together, we're back to square one.
Towns, what the other, we have to come to an agreement about an assessment method, but it doesn't change the amount of money that the budget is been shown to need.
Right, so the if, right now, the the assessment method, if if that is not agreed upon, you're right, the budget hasn't officially been voted down for what that total operating budget is that we put forth. But if we, if the assessment method is rejected and we have to go back to the drawing board, it could change the budget depending on what what number they do end up.
What the other towns do.
Well, not really what the other towns do. I guess it it would mean what level of reductions the district takes.
Right, and so if the other towns care about those reductions. then they could step up. I guess that's, I don't know if I would have said it that way. So I, so all, all we're looking at is the assessment method right now. And I think that's the most important thing to do because then it gives the other towns and it gives Amherst a realistic, realistic figures to deal with once the new assessment method is determined. And here we're talking about Amherst trying to save money to use for its elementary schools. So I'm trying for.
I don't know or have anything to do with Amherst Elementary School.
No, I know, but we do.
I, I understand that, but I, I, it does feel very unfortunate that it feels like the schools are pitted against each other.
I was an elementary school teacher. I am not pitting.
I'm saying that is how it feels.
I'm going to call on the superintendent again. Dr. Z.
I just want to make it clear, and, and I, I do understand the last comment that Sarah Best made. And it's kind of, it's, it is, it does feel that way. It feels like the conversation where, where we have to answer to had the impact to the elementary schools versus the region. And for me, that's why I wanted to always clarify what hat I wear because I, I, I wear three. Mandy just spoke about that earlier when she said the superintendent of three districts. But I want to be very clear this evening that the purpose of us coming forward and asking you to, to vote forth the assessment method is because of the timing of the Amherst meeting versus the timing of the other towns. And the fact that if all four towns have to agree on this assessment method for us to move forward. If we know at this point that you are unwilling to move forward, then we know what our next steps are. We have the livelihood of, at the end of the day, of children to think about. And so where does that leave us? And the reason why we are here as a regional team is to, and to get a understanding of what our next steps are, especially with the fact that we have a timeframe to submit our documentation to all four of the towns, which we've worked to meet. We have three of the towns who have their town meetings before your final meeting. And so that provides, that, that impacts what we can do and how we can move forward. Our job here, my job here as a superintendent is to make sure that that regional school district can function. I can't function without an opportunity to plan, and I can't plan if I don't know what I'm planning for. So that's, that is why we are here this evening. That is why Paul brought it forward. That is why we were invited, and that is what we're asking you to, to discuss. So we are just asking, as I ask everyone else, give me, give me the tools to do the job that I need to do. What is this council going to, to do around the assessment method? And then that guides us in our next steps.
Andy, have you spoken on this issue?
I didn't speak once.
Okay, then let me start back with Counselor Hanukkah.
So I think I'm going to try and say this a different way. The school committee believes that if we reject the assessment method, that they are trying to amend because we want to follow the actual agreement that all four towns agreed to in the written document that was signed and amended creating this district, that the other towns will not actually pass the budget bottom line number that the regional school committee passed. So that's why they're saying it would be rejected because they don't believe that three towns would actually vote the bottom line number if Amherst rejects the amendment that says Amherst pay more than 350,000, 320,000 more than the regional agreement method. They don't think the other three towns will agree to that. They could, and the regional school committee could say, we're going to keep that bottom line number. And we're going to go and say, let's find another modified method that maybe Amherst is willing to do a little bit of subsidies. The last couple of years with these guardrails, we have paid more than the regional agreement method would have called for. Last year it was approximately $140,000 more than the regional agreement method called for. This year they're asking us to pay 320,000 more. We're getting farther and farther away from that. The question tonight is, is that farther and farther away acceptable to us and our taxpayers? And is it good fiduciary duty to our taxpayers to say, reduce the other towns' tax bills so we can pay more? That doesn't mean that the budget at the region has to go lower. It doesn't mean that. We're talking about what, what share should we pay, what all four towns agreed to? Or something that charges Amherst more and reduces the property taxes of someone else. Now, the regional school committee could go back if we reject this and say, well, let's try maybe a guardrail of eight and a half or nine percent with the same number, or 12% with the same number. That would still mean Amherst pays more than what the regional agreement says, but it wouldn't be as high as 320,000. So the question that's in front of us now is, is that kind of subsidy and this lockstep, everyone increases by the same amount for the second year in a row, something that we as a town believe serves our taxpayers the best? And if we approve it, do we think, because my other assumption is if we approve it, the assessment method, the other three towns will vote for it and will, will be on the hook for that six and a half percent. That doesn't mean, but that's the assumption I'm working on, Ono, and when you said that. Like, it's not that we're deciding that budget number, but I'm assuming if we approve this assessment method, that budget is passed. And if we're concerned that we could not afford that, we either take more time or we reject the assessment method.
Kathy?
I'll just be short, by the way I see this, this is leverage to say to two towns, step up to the share that you agreed to. And, and the table Paul flashed quickly across the screen, has Amherst paying more than 4%? There was an increase in dollars in that. You know, so it's not that cut, it's an increase in Amherst dollars, just not what this shift away from the assessment method. So there is an opportunity for the school committee to come up with a different distribution, not the one that was proposed. There were three options that you all voted on, and there's something in between all those three options. I've been, Mandy just played with one on, what about no one goes up by more than 10% and everyone else is on the assessment method? Really, you don't go up the crypt or no more than 15%? Limiting the increase in some of the other towns because they, when I asked earlier on two and a half percent, a few towns have not had to go up two and a half percent. And we are getting lots of complaints from taxpayers about our taxes. Seniors mainly who can't, who are saying, I can barely live, afford to live in town, that the regular increase. So this is, we are a high tax town. And so it's, there is an opportunity to change that distribution. And then the other towns would see it, and it's leverage against the other two towns.
So can I just also mention, if, if the council decides that they want more time, there is also the option of referring this to the finance committee for them to come back. But they need to come back no later than the seventh. We've heard both the superintendent and the chair of the regional school committee say, the sooner we know, the better. And they came to us right after their meeting to give us the maximum amount of time. And Counselor Walker?
Thanks. I just have another question for clarification because I'm looking at the voted budget and the percentage increases. And so is not what's being suggested for all towns to increase their share? I see an increase across the board. So I, I'm not understanding the claim that then we would be paying other people's property taxes. I don't see where that is reflected in this chart or in any of the information that we just received. So I'm a little bit confused about that claim. And so is Amherst, are we just saying Amherst, right? Like, we can't make decisions for any other towns. We're not willing to go to the 6.5%. Is that what we're saying here? And then my second question to that would be, how does this decision and this conversation impact our next conversation on the change or the amendment of the budget guidelines? And are they connected in any way?
Paul, did you want to address?
Sure.
That, thanks.
Yeah, so if, I, I don't know if you have the document in front of you, but so we have, we included the actual vote that was given to us from the regional school committee, which includes the, which is included as attachment three A. So that, that's what they voted. And that includes a six and a half percent increase for, for each of the, of the communities. That, that applies guardrails to 6.5% on a budget of $37,077,171. Now, the, and that's what they, that's what they have voted, they asked the town to consider. Now, if you look at attachment two, the question to the, to the, to the schools was, well, what if the assessment method is, doesn't pass and we default to the regional agreement that we have in front, that we already have in, in place? And what would that division of that same number, that same 37,077,001 or 71, how does that get applied? And that percentage is based on enrollment, enrolling averages, a number of things that come into play, transportation, 10 miles, all things like that. So that's where the 4.8% for Amherst, 22.9% for Pelham, 14.10% for Leverett, and 7.65% for Shrewsbury comes in. It still gets the numbers, the same 37.077, 37,770. It's, it's the same dollars. It's just how it's divided up. And I think what the counselors are saying is that if we go the 6.5 across the board, Amherst taxpayers are paying more for the same services versus what the regional agreement would, would apply. It is hard to explain. I hope you're understanding.
More in a way that's not proportional, right? Because we already talked about our students being a higher proportion of the population. So you're saying more than a proportional amount. Because we would expect for it to be more or no.
Yeah, so we, we're putting it, the town of Amherst is being asked to put in, under the, if we, if we just use the regional school, 19,744,000, Pelham is 1.3 million, you know, 1.8 million down the, down the road like that.
Counselor Walker, if you look at the attachment two, according to the formula that includes rolling averages and all kinds of other things, Amherst's proportion should only be the 4.81%. It should not be the 6.5%. And that is because, and the reason, the difference is, if we're paying 6.5, that lets the other towns off the hook for paying what is really supposed to be their share for their average number of students over the formula.
They're not also being asked to go to the 6.5?
No, they're, they're being asked to go in different ways to 22, 14, and 7 because that truly reflects the number of students they bring into the school system.
Okay, can, sorry, and can we just move on to my next question too about how this decision will impact the budget guidelines conversation?
That's the budget guidelines conversation, which we don't want to, we can't mix those two right now. The budget guidelines conversation is a conversation about where are we finding any of this additional money? Right at this point, we went into this budget with a 4%. We started earlier, but we're now at 4%. The budget guidelines conversation is how can we find more than 4% to go either here or regional or elementary schools or whatever? We still need more money.
I know what the conversations are for, but I'm asking how they impact each other. Like, if we reject this, can we still approve the other? Do they have implications on each other?
Yes, you can still approve the other.
Yeah, while you're thinking about that, I'm going to go to Andy.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm finished. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been involved with this for probably 20 years now. When I was first on the original finance committee. And from my experiences with being chair of the regional school district planning committee that was trying to achieve a four-town K-12 district, which didn't ever happen. You know, I've read the statute a lot of times, and there are two different sections. One is about budget and one is about assessment method. And the one about budget says that it takes three towns to pass. The one about assessment method is an entirely different section of Massachusetts general law. And what it currently says, and there's a whole history, and I'm going to skip the history because that would really put you to sleep. But what it says is that each town in a regional district will use a, a, a method that it describes unless all four towns agree to an alternate method. And for many, many years, the alternate, the alternate, excuse me, the alternate method was solely based upon the number of students in each town. There was the assessment method that is in the statute looks at also ability to pay, which is defined by the average income in the town of residents and the total amount of property that is taxable, which is sometimes called the EQV. And what we ended up doing after going back and forth amongst the four towns for many years was to agree to what is now in the regional agreement in replace of the old one. And it is to use the statutory method, but to average it out over five-year periods. Now, the statutory method has a provision in it also that gets really complicated. So it does involve a little bit of the number of students in the district. But I think that they are two separate sections. And that is why when you look at a town meeting warrant or you look at what we do as votes in a, in a council, you are voting on both proposals. You are voting on the budget and you're voting on the assessment method. So if three towns pass the budget, the budget passes. But the question is, what happens if all of the towns don't agree to the alternate method? In which case you fall back to the, is, is my understanding, and unless an attorney from, who represents the district of the town tells me otherwise, you fall back on the statutory, or, or you fall back on the straight statutory method. Yeah, or, so I think that you, you get into a very confusing situation as to what actually occurs. And so I'm not sure that what we really don't need is clarity from town attorneys. And if it's a statutory method, knowing what the statutory method would do. I have a suggestion, which is that the regional schools convene a four towns meeting and get the attorney for the schools, or we can ask KP Law to give us, which is our town attorney, an, an opinion on what, whether I am correct or what is the law that applies in the scenario we're talking about. And that we also then do a calculation of what would be the requirement if the, for each town, if the method that is proposed in the, as the alternate method is rejected. And then with that information coming before a four towns meeting that could, could happen very quickly, we would be able to have a four town conversation, which would be fully informed.
Ona?
All right, I got one sheet, but it's front and back.
All right, I got one sheet, but it's front and back. Um, and Sarah Bass, I feel like you are in a particular configuration where. All of these feels just shot right at you. So know that while I am looking at you and asking you. I welcome responses from anyone. Also, as previously warned, it's after ten AM, so I'm getting chippy. It's also after ten AM. I'm not wrong. All right. Double chippy now, okay, so, um, couple of things. First off, my, my slight bit of snark is can someone please make me a Schoolhouse Rock video on the assessment method? Because it's taken so many. Luck, lessons on this. I also want to just be very clear, I don't think anyone's tax bills are getting lower. I don't think anyone is suggesting that as the reality, but I do understand what you're saying. I would like to. Raise the question of how the budget guidelines might start factoring in how close towns are to their levy limit. Uh, and looking at that, because it seems like it's something that has been kind of skirted around and now we're saying it point blank. Which I always appreciate that bluntness, but I, I think that we have talked about it, but we're now rejecting assessment methods because of something that we haven't. Factored in to my knowledge. And so, and, and we can look back at, at those prior years to look at those rolling averages of how close towns were to their levy limit. I also want to just confirm my numbers here and Sarah Bass, I do have questions for you if that's okay. Do you know the, and I apologize, I was looking quickly, what the current percentage of students from Amherst is in the region? Could you tell me?
Off the top of my.
Off the top of your head? Or Dr. Z, if.
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, I would need some time to pull that out.
That's okay.
You can get, we, we can definitely make note and get it sent to you tomorrow.
Okay, I, what I've heard is it's around eighty.
If I was gonna guess, it's gonna, but that is a.
No worries.
Lot of guessing.
No worries.
A lot of guessing.
No worries.
Also after ten AM.
Yeah, after ten AM, so, so if I'm understanding this correctly. The lower number for Amherst would put us at about seventy nine point eight point nine percent of the total budget. That high, that higher number would put us around about eighty one percent of that total budget. And the difference in the two is three hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and change. So. I'm also curious, when you look at the current percentage from Amherst. I am also curious about the current percentage from Amherst to charter or choice out and the dollar amounts from Amherst versus the other towns. Because that money is paid out from the schools budgets, right? The towns don't individually pay for that. Is that correct? Not at the region, yeah, at the region. So I think we're. We're talking about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and I do think we should look at how much money. The district is paying for Amherst students who do choose to leave comparatively, and I might be off base. So that's thing one. I, I also think we need to be a bit, okay, I'm going back to my first page here because this is where I started flipping over. All right, so my, it doesn't automatically. Revert, or wait, hang on. All right. Your tutorial was very helpful and I'm still lost, but okay, so. If we're looking at that other assessment method, I don't understand how we can kid ourselves to say there's a world. Where Pelham is gonna agree to a, over a twenty two percent increase. Leverett's gonna agree to a fourteen percent and Schutzeberry is gonna agree to a seven. It's not like they don't have elementary schools that also need funding, it's not like they don't also have. Yes, maybe they have not gone up to the limit they could with their property taxes and I, that's why I think that should be taken into account. However, I don't think that we can. Totally ignore the fact that these are other towns in our region. And that they have their own budgetary needs and that there's. No chance that folks are gonna be. I mean, I'll, just Pelham, a tw- a twenty three percent budget increase, that's, I don't see a world where that happens. Anyway, these are my disjointed post ten AM and PM thoughts, but I, my, my concern here is that when we're talking about this difference. We're talking about enabling our other three communities to continue to participate. I think we need to relook at that dang assessment method and make a Schoolhouse Rock video. And, uh, we're talking about essentially three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And I know that we have so many budgetary needs, I understand that. Are we really going to, to sink the budget over that amount? I'm not sure I'm ready to do that.
I have a little bit of information for your questions because Deb is a wealth of.
And you speak closer to the mic.
Sorry. So I have a little bit of information on your questions because Deb is a guru of all data driven things. And so, um. Amherst is responsible for roughly eighty and a half percent of the charter out from the region, eighty eight.
Sorry, do you have a dollar amount associated with that? I can do the math if you know the total amount of charter.
It depends on which.
Oh, okay.
It's. I'm, meantime, I'm gonna go to Hala Lord.
Thank you, I first wanted to thank all the staff, administrators, parents. Who helped facilitate and keep their children safe in their, um, civil action today. Hundreds and hundreds of students, kiddos as young as two, banging pots and pans out here. Playing instruments, I just really wanna, and then most especially thank all the youth and students who came out. Really excited by that. I'm a little, nah, I don't wanna say, okay. I'm un- wondering why it feels really rushed and so late. And maybe it's because we needed to wait till there was a budget voted upon. But since September, our first four towns meeting, I felt this tension in the assessment method. I've, I've heard that Amherst pays more than it should and I just. Looking back, I'm like, oh, I wish I should have, I requested that we spend an extra hour as the four towns and really talk about this and. And figure this out before rejecting it and then sending the school. Ah, school team into more work or more, you know, stress having to try to figure it all out. So I just wanted to voice that. I've known this has been a tension. And I'm just feeling really rushed now at the last minute, but we also have to make a quick decision because then if we, it's rejected, you know, so it's feeling. Last minute and rushed, even though I know many other people probably saw this coming. I just wish, we could have found a way to talk about it before. The end of March, um, so that's all, and I really appreciate everything you've been saying and I'm, I'm grateful, thanks.
Counselor Hanke.
So we get really into the weeds and I'll get into the weeds a little bit more fairly quickly. If the same total assessment from last year was done this year so that it was a level funded budget. Because of how those percentages changed within the regional agreement methods. Pelham would be facing. At least a seven point three percent year over year increase, and that was if we followed the regional agreement method last year and we didn't. So they'd be facing even higher just because of the weeds. I was gonna say that, just because of the weeds, but to get to another one of your points, um. What Andy said was if three towns pass the budget, it's the budget. But if the fourth town, the fourth town doesn't have a choice on the overall number, but if we voted fourth. And the budget was already adopted by the other three towns, that budget would be there. If we then said no to the modified assessment method, Pelham would face that twenty two percent increase. According to what we have been told today. Because the budget would be the budget at thirty six million dollars, that's what we're being told today. And so you can look at being asked to talk about this assessment method now. In some sense, could be seen as a courtesy to the other towns to say, hey, as you're looking at that total number. We're not necessarily, we're not gonna say yes to that modify, that alternative modifying the legal agreement we've all agreed to. We might not say yes to that, that's what rejecting it now is, is giving them a heads up that says, hey. If all three of you pass that number. You're defaulting to the regional agreement and letting them know now, it could be seen as a courtesy and that would then give. That would then give the regional school committee time to call another four towns to discuss. It would give them time to say, do we have to look at the budget differently? And all of that, so that's, that's, that's how I'm looking at. Why we are being asked to do the assessment method now, than when we would normally do it, which is in June. After everyone has held their four towns meeting, when es- essentially we're told that's the budget and we are picking between. An alternative assessment method or the regional agreement method. So, uh, another way of thinking about it. But the reason we're in these high percentage over year over year increases for other towns. Is because they have been, we've been courteous the last three to four years in saying, you know, we'll, we'll go with these guardrails that. Lower their numbers below what the legal agreement says they should be. And we've cooperated with that for three or four years now. And that means it just gets worse year after year after year and at least for me. One of the things we urged at the four towns meeting was get us back closer, get us closer. And what we're being asked, what the regional school committee has asked us to approve this year as. A modification to that legal agreement gets us even farther. And that's where I, I have a problem. Two towns were saying get us closer, it wasn't just Amherst, it was Amherst and Schutzeberry saying get us closer to that legal agreement method. And instead, the regional school committee got us farther, asked, is asking us to go even farther away. And. No matter what that number in the bottom line budget is at this point, I can't. Uh, in, for me, I can't say that that is good for our taxpayers, no matter what the bottom line budget number is. Getting farther away from the legally agreed upon method, I can't say that benefits our taxpayers anymore.
Jennifer.
If I could, Deb raised her hand to, could we ask her, because it might provide information that would be useful? No, but we wanna, we're here, we. Would like to get the information.
What is the question?
What in, when Counselor Hanke was speaking, you. It had some.
Is it to provide a piece of information or is it to give it, your opinion on something?
The assessment method as I understand it.
Okay.
Is. Okay, the budget is, I understand it. There's the pieces, there's the assessment method.
Right.
And there is the amount that gets sent to each town. A town gets assessed a certain amount, it's not a percentage of the total. So if you're gonna go not statutory. Then those numbers would be different.
I, I think. Yeah. The question's been called. Thank you. We can have a whole evening on assessment methods. And we still are not gonna have that, wait, the question's been called, that does not require a second, correct?
It does.
It does.
Wait, who called the question?
Vote, okay.
Point of, point of.
Pat called the question, but I don't know if you do.
Pat called the question, is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Okay.
Point of order.
Please explain which votes are for what purpose?
Okay, right now, all we're voting on is calling the question, okay? That requires the two thirds of us have to agree that we're calling the question, okay? Does that help? Okay. We're going to start in this case with Hala Lord. Aye. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
No.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
No.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye, Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Okay, the question's been called, that it's, that motion passed. Eleven in favor, two opposed, we're going to move to the immediate vote. And the immediate vote in this case is to reject the following amendment to the regional school district.
Just point of order, please, so, uh, an aye is to vote to reject.
That is correct. An aye is a vote to reject. Any questions? Okay, Pam Rooney.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
No.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
No.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye, Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Nay.
It passes with. Uh, nine in favor and four opposed.
Eleven point seven creator next year.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
It's roughly two million. Real.
Okay, uh, a. There's two more items under. Actions. I'm sorry. The first is a proposed amendment to the FY twenty six budget guidelines. This was proposed by, uh, Anna Devlin-Gothier. She will make a presentation and I gathered there is some motion she plans to make.
It's not a secret that I graduated from the Amherst Pelham Public Schools and a lot of you are probably sick of me reminding you that I did. But I feel the need to mention it often because I want to honor what I learned there about equity, democracy, community and creativity. Which is what I'm holding front of mind in making the proposal that's in your packet today. When I was in middle and high school, I got to take some incredibly, absolutely incredible classes. Some even taught by teachers who were on faculty at local colleges, like American Society and Film with Mr. Gerstein. Which taught me to study and respect history and our past, but to learn from it in order to create positive change in the areas we need it most. Or constitutional law with Mr. Fricka, which lit a spark in me about the importance of political engagement and understanding. And taught me the importance of creating change to serve the needs of the people. And some lessons were less about the content, more about the care with which I was taught. My algebra honors teacher was June Wilby. I struggled in her class, not with the math concepts, which I actually really loved, but with focus. Ms. Wilby sat with my parents and with me and we came up with a plan where I would see her once a week, every week. After school to talk through what I was working on in class and discuss questions that I had. Ms. Wilby was giving up her time to teach me the quadratic formula, which I can still recite to this day and I will not because it's ten fifty nine at night. For me, Ms. Wilby looked for a pathway to success instead of doing what she could have done, which is to give me a barely earned C and dust off her hands. She worked with me, finding a new strategy that allowed me to succeed. And if I remember correctly, I got an A, this will be for some. God forsaken reason you're watching this, please do not write me and tell me I'm wrong because I'm pretty sure I got an A. My point here isn't just to thank Ms. Wilby and my other teachers, but it's to highlight the way that our educators look at a situation in front of them. And instead of stating, here's why we can't, asking how might we? This approach is not exclusive to educators by any means, but it's more prevalent there than anywhere else I've seen. The field of education has gotten better at meeting student needs every year. This trend is true in any industry, right? We always get better at what we do, it's the evolution of practice. But educators don't have the option to simply treat students like we did when we didn't know any better. Once they know better, they have to do better. It's legally required, nor should they have to not do better, even if it were not legally mandated. And meeting those needs is expensive. Today at the State Budget Ways and Means Committee hearing, we heard one of our school committee members discuss how our enrollment decline is outpaced by teacher cuts by twenty percent. This is not a matter of doing less with less, we have done that, we can't drop further. What I am proposing today is a reflection of much of my learning and what you see is my attempt to start the conversation of how might we? I ask my fellow counselors to think like an educator. Please take a moment, take a breath, try to leave aside a mindset that the way we've always done it is the best way. Please check your internal biases about which areas of a municipality you're familiar with, or the assumption that they all function the same, or that they have the same needs. Please let go of frustrations with past elected bodies or processes. Our responsibility is to the town, and the town includes our schools. I'm asking you to join me in figuring out how might we lessen the damage to all of these sectors without disproportionately harming some. I know that what I've proposed is painful for many areas of our municipality, and I want to stress that it is in no way a reflection of the quality or importance of the work that they are doing. We cannot cut budgets and expect the same results. I'm asking you to join me in this challenging conversation, not to say, well, they should have, or this is keeping us equal and peaceful. It isn't. And if they should have and didn't, we can't change the past. The proposal that I put in front of you has three main elements, and I outlined them in my memo. The first, which we'll address last because of order, is a joint task force on addressing long-term projections on the financial needs of our community. The charge for this task force was co-created by myself, along with the chairs of the Amherst Pelham and Amherst School Committees. So thank you, Jennifer and Sarah Bass, for your help on that. The second, which I imagine we will spend the bulk of our time discussing, is an adjustment to the recommended percentage splits of the FY twenty six budget. I recognize that we are in extremely challenged, in an extremely challenging year and facing deficits in both the municipal and school areas. However, when we look at the changing landscape for both of these areas, I believe that division should be adjusted. The third is a bridge gift to the Amherst Elementary Schools, intended to support their needs in FY twenty six before savings are realized in the consolidation of Port River and Wildwood Elementaries. Because we don't know those numbers yet, the motion will be a request for information. We have a lot of brain power in this room. I'm also going to ask all of you, please don't let a concept die because it isn't phrased in the perfect way, or you want, you haven't figured out exactly how to do it. Please work with me, work with each other. And ultimately, you don't have to vote for it, but let's at least craft something we can vote on versus just looking for reasons why not. So with that, I move to amend the FY. Already? I haven't even made my motion yet. With that, I move to amend the FY twenty six Town Council Budget Guidelines, as voted by the Town Council on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, as indicated in the document titled ADG Proposed Amendments to the FY twenty six Council Budget Guidelines.
Second.
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 Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. The floor is open for discussion. Counselor Hanke.
So Anna knows these are coming, because I warned her and Athena. I have three motions. I know I'm gonna make two of them. But my goal in these motions is to try to get me to be able to vote for these modifications. The first, I'm gonna make the first motion, and Athena, I'm gonna do it as the alternative, the motion to revert instead of the motion to divide. And it's a mo, I move to revert all revisions to Section Five Capital Budget Recommendations and Comments, and the change to ten percent from ten and a half percent on page two under the capital budget to the original. Hopefully, there'll be a second, and then I can explain what that one is.
Ryan, second.
So this one is to try and say, I. All of the comments we've heard recently, so Anna's proposal reduces capital in the guidelines from ten and a half to ten percent, and then says, we'll go up next year, back up to ten and a half percent. That, that down and then up, instead of always keeping it level, challenges the operating budgets in the year you have to then increase above your whatever. And, but beyond that, the comments, even from those we've heard regarding the schools, have been not just about operating, but capital. The two things we've been hearing most about for the last couple of months are schools, operating budgets, and school capital and other capital. And so I feel it's wrong, I, I cannot support reducing our capital expenditures to increase the operating at this time when our capital expenditures absolutely need more. We can, we can discuss where that capital money goes, but I don't think it's appropriate to reduce it because we should be spending it on capital because our buildings and our school buildings, our town buildings, our roads, our everything. We just heard from TSO, the backlog on roads is actually kind of worse in terms of the great, the condition of the roads than it was four years ago on average. Like, we might not, I know Kathy said in JCPC, maybe if we don't do some stuff, there's money to reduce, but I'd rather, if there's that money there because we don't have to do those particular projects, find other projects that we can speed up and get done. So this motion is mainly to say, keep capital at ten and a half percent.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. It's an amendment to the original motion. Questions? Counselor Hanke, I'm going to move on to Counselor Walker.
I'm just wondering, do we have a copy of the suggestions in our packet somewhere? Or can we put them on the screen? Because I know Mandy Jo spoke to the ten versus ten and a half, but I think there was also a mention of restoring another entire section, and I'm just trying to visualize what exactly that language is.
Can you increase the size, please?
So my motion on this screen would restore the point five under the capital budget line here. It doesn't deal with anything above that in blue, just the ten and the.
I do not know why, but I don't see it.
She hasn't shared it to the screen yet.
To go on.
Sorry.
We're getting there. There you go. In other words, it would not make the changes.
It would not make that change. And then, once you see that Athena could page potentially down to page four, I think it is. Section five. Oh. There. That section five capital, there's the. The first paragraph change and the second sentence would revert back to the original that is currently in the document, not those changes.
Not the blue underlined.
Yeah, no, that, that would disappear. All the blue would go back to, if it's crossed out, it would reappear, and any underlined would disappear.
Okay, thank you.
Under this motion.
Counselor Lord.
Um, thank you. It's a budgetary question around capital. So when we do the budget and you have a capital budget, does that come from the capital stabilization fund? And if it doesn't, we have a bunch of money in there, and I'm wondering if we could take that point five percent from the capitalizations fund so that that point five percent could go to the schools. I know, you know, I don't understand some of these things, so I'm, that's why I'm just trying to lift them up with some suggestions.
I'm gonna ask if the town manager wants to address that. Those are two different questions.
So to take funds out of the capital stabilization fund is a, two thirds vote of the Town Council, and that can be used for any kind of capital project?
But the, the ten point five percent is what we have in our annual budget for capital.
Correct.
So that's already in the annual budget. The capital stabilization fund was created by the council about two or three years ago, and we put in additional free cash to that in hopes of saving for the larger capital projects like the fire station. So they're actually two different. The, the ten point five percent is in every year's budget. Okay? The capital stabilization fund is a savings account over here, usually thought, thought to be for the larger projects. So it's, your, your first question was, where does the ten point five come from? It's in the annual budget.
Lynn?
Yes. Kathy? Does that help? Melissa?
I just wanted to say also that the, I mean, the capital stabilization is for the years that we're gonna exceed the ten and a half percent, and we don't want that to impact our operating budget. So we're saving for the future years when we have large debt payments that would eat up all of our capital, and we would, will end up spending more on capital in those years. And we don't want those future years' operating budgets to be impacted by primarily the four major building projects.
So it's essentially used for us to stabilize that borrowing. Okay? Does that help you? Okay. Kathy?
I liked this part of Anna's proposal a lot because it frees up three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I don't think there is really a problem of going back up. I actually understood Hollis' question to be, could we, if we wanted to, to take a piece out of the capital stabilization fund to keep it at ten point five? And the answer is, yes, we could, but there are reasons why we might not want to do that. In this case, I'm chair of JCPC, and the list of projects we had this year, I can see some that aren't urgent, may not need to be done, and I could see coming in with a recommendation that's at around ten percent. So not throwing something out that we don't want. And if I'm looking at next year, there aren't a lot of projects that could easily be moved to this year. You know, so Mandy's saying, well, pick another one that's high priority. So I did like this piece because I think if we want to go up on schools, we have to find the money to do it. And so one pace to look is, could we go lower on the ten point five? Now, it only gets us one year. I mean, that's the other thing, you know, Anna, you're, you know, we're gonna be in the same place next year, because I just want everyone, even worse, because the entire increase this year for the town is three point five million total in revenues. That's it. So if a million goes here, health insurance took about one point five of it, five hundred in each of the big budgets, five hundred municipal, five hundred regional, five hundred schools. So everything else, every salary increase, staff people, there's just, that's what we're talking about when increases. So this year, we might be able to reconfigure a bit to hold down on one. But capital was the one place I saw that we could do this year without saying, we don't want to hire four firefighters, you know, in terms of the municipal budget, because the municipal budget is trying to figure out how to live within four. So if we go to three and a half, we have to give the municipal budget of what gives. And Anna talked about some vacancies in one department that the council added, a ten person department, that hasn't been functioning the way we had hoped it to, and it has vacancies. So if the town froze those, that frees up some money to live with something less. But Anna was trying to balance it, and I thought, in an appropriate way. So unless Mandy has another place to find the money, I think going down to ten makes sense if we're gonna revisit the guidelines.
Pam Rooney.
Hearing what Kathy just said, I'm, I'm feeling somewhat comfortable about that kind of a change. What, what I'm finding difficult in this is that I don't really want to bring, bring apart, break apart each and every one of these suggestions because I could feel good about the, the ten and a half to ten percent, but I don't see, I want to see all these pieces and how it affects the entire picture, and I'm gonna get these one at a time, and that's gonna be tough for me to deal with. So I, I can't, I, so far, I haven't seen the whole picture.
Counselor Ette?
A lot of the conversation that I get from residents in the districts and also from outside District One speak about some of the structures that we have, the capital projects that we have. I worry that moving from ten point five to ten wouldn't be a one-year thing, because I have to ask myself, what happens if, next year, if we are at the same position? You know, the point five is an amount that, when it disappears, it's hard to know what its effect is in the town. And so I think it's. We should pay more attention to a capital project in the town, and so I, I'm in favor of keeping it at ten point five.
Jennifer?
This is really a question. As, if we decide that we're gonna not fill two positions, or we're gonna go down for a year from ten point five percent in capital to ten percent, are we just recommending? I, I mean, can, how, can we ensure that that goes to the schools? And how does that happen?
Can I?
Sure.
I don't actually have that dollar amount going to the schools in my proposal. So my proposal has the drop to ten percent, the freezing of the positions, all equating to cost savings that would stay in the municipal services budget to try to mitigate some of the challenges that dropping to three percent would pose there. So it's, the estimate that I had, Pam, to get to your question, was a minimum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would stay, that would be kind of reallocated within that municipality, with, within the municipal services budget, per Paul's discretion. It's, it's, it's a lot of moving pieces, but it, that dollar amount isn't directly translating.
Yeah, you're right, actually. But, but we know that it will put us in a position to be able to increase our percentage to the schools.
That is my belief, yes.
So do, do we have to, I guess what I'm saying, do we vote that? Where, if we change the budget guidelines, that certain pieces go to the, certain savings go to the school?
Guidelines are guidelines. At the same time, the conversation basically is like the congressional record. And that basically suggests, and here's how we want it to go.
We want, okay. That's as far as we can go.
That's my, always been my analogy about guidelines and discussions. Patty Angeles.
Thank you, and thank you, Anna, and Mary Bass, and the people who worked on this. It's, there's a lot about it that I'm interested in and certainly like a collaborative beginning. I'm gonna sit with the ten point five because I feel similar to Counselor Ette, that point five percent, I keep thinking about school roof that are leaking. I keep thinking about repairs to other buildings in town and things like that. So that three hundred and whatever it was, seems to me it needs to be there, but we actually have to do the work in, in terms of then repairing buildings and stuff like that, which I don't want to digress into that. But, so that doesn't feel like a place where it, it, it just feels like, ah, we, we have too much that we haven't maintained that we need to repair. So I'm stuck there a little bit.
Counselor Ryan?
So I, I'm sympathetic to what Anna is trying to do. I guess I see it as trying to build a bridge in this year to something that will be sustainable in years going forward. The challenge is that it's hard to see what we're building this bridge toward. The immediate need is, is clear. We've heard many voices speaking about it. The reasons for this are many, and we've also heard something about that. Certain things haven't been discussed about the reasons, and I think we'll leave those perhaps to the side. But this is tough because the capital need is real, and the half a percent seems like Trump change to some people, but it's not. And so it's, it's a really difficult decision, trying to build something in the guidelines that would give us an ability to help the schools in this year that still doesn't do that still doesn't do serious damage to our larger goals as a town. We're not just schools. We have many, many other very pressing needs. So I don't know where I stand on this at the moment. I thought, I wanted to hear the argument. That's why I seconded Mandy's motion. Yeah. I also feel that there are a lot of moving parts here, and it's difficult to see how, at 11:30 at night or whenever we finally end this discussion, we'll be able to have any clear sense of what we're building. So we might also think about whether this is going to have to be looked at in more detail by, by, say, the Finance Committee or somebody. But I am sympathetic to what she's trying to do. I'm really struggling with how to do it in a way that isn't going to cause serious damage to other parts of our budget.
Bob Hegner?
Yeah, Anna, I don't want to say we can't do this, but I do want to point out that we have $10 million in capital requests for buildings, for maintenance of buildings that we own. The town engineer gave us a presentation that said if we continue to only fund the roads at half a million or a million above what we get from the state, they're going to deteriorate even further than they are now over 10 years. In order to keep them up and actually improve them, it'll take a town infusion of $5 million a year. So, you know, I don't know how we're going to do that. And then on top of that, we have a proposal from the DPW Superintendent to put $6 million into Southeast Street to redo the traffic routes for the school. So we have, I don't know how we're going to fund these things anyway, even without anything changes in, I don't know how we're going to do it. But we have to, we have to figure out how to do this. Otherwise, we're gonna, as Georgia said, we're going to wind up with, you know, with people not being able to use the town the way we want to use the town. So just bear that in mind.
Andy?
Excuse me. This is very painful because I understand the concern about school funding. I've been always a supporter of schools, even though some people sometimes ask, how is that so? My kids had a wonderful experience and a great experience in the schools. And the increases that have been coming on an annual basis in the school budgets that are greater than the revenue increases are not because of mismanagement of schools at all. They're because, there are things that are happening all over the state. And they're happening because of the loss of state revenue. And they're happening because of exceptional things that occur because of schools. We heard a lot of people talking about special education. And special education, number of students who are asking for it is increasing. And the cost of providing that assistance is increasing. So nobody made bad decisions that got us into this, but we are where we are. Just as we look at the capital, like I said, I have two things that I just want to point out that are going to be painful as we go forward into future years. One is that the 10 and 1/2% of capital includes anything that's related to capital, including repayment of bonds and payment of assessments from the regional schools for their requests for capital. So, you know, as we look to the middle school roof, for example, or even just the request that we received this year, that's coming out of the repayment of that, the payment of that is coming out of the 10.5% too. So you need to remember that the 10.5% covers everything, including education. And education includes regional schools. And the last thing that I want to point out is that we are going to, if we, when we, if we do what you suggest, Anna, and this isn't an opinion as to whether we should or shouldn't, it's just a statement of observation, fact. In fact, and that is, we're going to get into the same discussion that we got into with the regional school this year when it comes to next year. What is the base of an increase next year? And the base is going to be where we are this year. In '26 will be what we're discussing for '27. Where do we build above that? So just remember that as we think about it.
Councilor Walker?
I mean, I just think the reality of our situation is that there are so many unmet needs in the town, right? But we can't keep using that as an excuse to not act on things, right? We're not going to invest $5 million into our roads in one year. Like, that is just not going to happen, even though it would be great in an ideal world, we could, right? And so we need to start prioritizing things because there are so many things that we are not addressing. And we can't just keep saying, well, we don't want to because maybe we need more money for the schools and maybe we need to repair the roof for the middle school. Because we're not actually, we don't have plans to actually do any of these things that we're using excuses for. So I think we need to prioritize something, which, for myself personally, and I think for a lot of the people in this town who came to speak tonight, I know and who have written to us, the schools are a priority. This is something that we should prioritize addressing. And I think Anna has put forward a very thoughtful alternative. Like, this is something we could do that would have the impact that we would like to see. And it does not have a huge negative impact on other areas of our budget. I do understand that 0.5% can be a large number. But again, in reality, like, are we going to need that 0.5% in the next year? Because we're never going to spend down our capital budget all the way. That's not how we function. And I think Holla brought up another point, is that if we do meet unforeseen circumstances, we have other options. Like, we do have a capital stabilization fund. And I know that that's supposed to be something we're saving for the fire station and we don't want to touch it. But it is a rainy day fund. There are other things. We have money that falls to free cash. Like, there are other things that we can use to mitigate that in the long run. And I think for me personally, I just want to vote for Anna's proposal as is.
Jennifer Taub?
Yeah, I just think we have to meet this moment with the schools. You know, we are where we are, but where we are is we just can't allow the schools to go off a cliff. So I think we have to, and even, you know, if we're, we are now where we're probably just looking, you know, for the next year, because once we go off that cliff, we don't get back up. And I think, you know, a part of Anna's proposal is that we, a committee is formed to do some long-range planning, which I think is, you know, long overdue. But I think we have to do whatever we can. That, I agree with Alyssa, that we have a lot of priorities, but the school is a top priority because of all the implications. I mean, for the students, of course, and all the implications it has for our town to be a viable town. I mean, we talk about, we need to have families stay here and move here. And the, the one, you know, refrain that we keep hearing is people move here and stay here for the schools. So, and I, you know, as Chair of JCPC, I do trust Kathy's assessment that at least for the next year, we can probably go down from 10.5% in our capital to 10%. But I think we need to do everything we can responsibly and possibly do to save our schools.
So the motion that's on the floor is to not go down to 10. Bob Hegner?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention about the long-term, the task force. First of all, I think we need to include.
Please, it's a different motion.
Well, okay, but it's in this, it's in this motion.
It's not an amendment to the guideline. It was discussed in the memo, but not amendment to the guidelines. Sorry. All right. Bob, did you have anything on the guidelines? On the issue that's before us, which is the capital? No? Okay, Kathy?
Okay, I just, Anna, you can check my math. But if we were trying to get closer to 5% for the region and closer to 5% for elementary, we need $450,000 or 458 somewhere in that neighborhood. So that's why I said, going from 10.5% to 10%, I'm trying to find money that allows us to do that. And I am willing to talk about the other parts. You found money by going lower on municipal than four, going lower on library than four. And there's something between four and three, three and 1/2. So I'm trying to literally just add up to that amount of money. And I can find it, but I can't find it without going from 10.5% to 10%. So that's why, Mandy, I said, that amendment, I think, completely undermines what Anna's overall intent was, unless you have another $320,000. And I did also like the other piece on a bridge for elementary. Under, we'll have some surplus funds and make them first up for getting that amount of money as a bridge, as a bridge, as I understood it. But that wasn't part of the guideline piece, other than writing those words in. So that's why I said, Mandy, if you take that out, I don't see where the money is.
George? I mean, sorry, Councilor Ryan?
So Kathy, I want to address this directly to her. She doesn't have to answer. But for me, what I'm struggling with is something I think you're thinking about too. You've spoken about it. So what happens next year? What happens the year after that? So I want to build this bridge. You, like I am, looking for ways that we can make it work. I agree that the capital, lowering the capital by half a percent would put a substantial contribution and maybe is going to be necessary to build a bridge. What happens next year and the year after that? What do we say to that?
Next year is a mess. I mean, I really, I mean, just if the state doesn't, what we heard today, if the state doesn't move on the charter formula, doesn't work, move on Chapter 70, doesn't move on another, it becomes even worse. Because we just had the state at NDC side say, okay, to a charter expansion where they actually made a public comment, we don't have to worry about happens to the other schools. And I think that's a misreading of the charter law. They're supposed to be seeing the same distribution of kids we are. So I don't know whether we can appeal it. So I was looking for a way of appealing that. But that's more money coming out of what would have been education money. The state doesn't fix those, it gets worse each year.
Well, Kathy, you're right. And hopefully, the state will do something at some point, but we can't control that. We, today, yesterday, whenever people have spoken. Do you feel like I do, that I'm looking for something coming from the schools as well? I'm looking for, if I'm building a bridge towards something, I'd like to feel like there's something coming towards me as well. And I don't get that sense. Maybe you're saying that that's not needed. It's up to the state to build that bridge.
I'm looking at the budgets that they put together. And at 4 and 1/2 or 5%, they're still reducing staff. So this is not, this is not a maintaining staff. So I did hear some things in regional that I think there could be more to coordinate middle school and high school so you can take, kids can walk across the driveway and take courses in each. And there might be some savings there.
We need to stick with the guidelines.
But so I'm just saying, the schools have moved quite a bit to get these budgets under more control. I'm not sure they can move the extra step right now. So if this is one year, the one year is breathing room.
George, did you have a further comment? Councilor Lord?
I don't want to be out of line if we're just supposed to be talking about the 10, the 10.5%.
The motion that's on the floor is about the 10.
Yes.
And I'm going to make us go back to that.
Okay. And later, I'll give my answer to Georgia's question about next year.
All right. The motion on the floor is to move to revert all revisions in Section 5, capital budget recommendations and comments, and the change to 10% from 10.5% on Page 2, under capital budgets to the original. Is that correct? Okay. That motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further comment on that motion? Then we'll move to a vote on that motion, that amendment. Excuse me.
A yes vote takes it back to 10%, 10.5%. A no vote keeps it at 10% as written in the proposal.
Right. So a yes vote moves it back to the 10.5%. A no vote keeps it at 10%, okay?
Can you, I'm confused now.
Yes equals 10.5%. If you want 10 and 1/2%, you vote yes on this motion to amend. If you liked the 10% Anna proposed, you vote no on the motion to amend.
Okay. Okay. All right, we're starting, starting with Councilor Ryan.
I vote aye.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
No.
Alicia Walker?
No.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Anna Devlin-Goth here?
No.
Councilor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councilor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
No.
Councilor Lord?
No.
Pam Rooney?
No.
The motion fails and goes there. I want to make a suggestion. And that is that we refer this to the Finance Committee and have the Finance Committee review it in a manner that's consistent with the fact that they set the guidelines to begin with. And they come back to us on April 7th with any changes. That, I just think we're going to be here till 2 o'clock, which was my guess anyway. Anna?
I would like to know the procedure for, because we do have another motion on the floor. Right? So you made a suggestion, and if you'd like to make a motion, maybe that supersedes the motion on the floor? I'm seeing Mandy nod, okay. But again, just as a reminder for the council, the Finance Committee drafts the budget guidelines. They are a council document. I would not support this going to Finance Committee. I think we need to have this discussion as a full council.
Kathy?
Just so everyone knows.
The motions, I didn't, I have not made the motion.
All I'm going to say is the Finance Committee does meet tomorrow unless we cancel the meeting. We held it for this possibility. If this gets referred, I, as Chair, would say, we just voted on the 10 and 1/2 going to 10. So we're not going to revisit that issue. We would focus on the other parts of Anna's changing the guidelines. We wouldn't focus on that because I feel like the whole town council just voted in on this one. So if it gets referred, I would just have the focus of the discussion be on the rest. I'm not saying it should get referred. I'm just saying, if it does, we meet tomorrow. And there will be a report out as fast as I can write it.
Councilor Walker?
I just, I don't want to send this back to the Finance Committee because I think with the original budget guidelines, it already went through the process. And this is amending that document that already came from Finance, went through council.
Okay, fine. I haven't made the motion, okay? Councilor Hanke?
So I have another motion I'd like to make. I'm going to speak about it because the words are really confusing. So then I'll read the words so that people understand what's going on. Anna's document, Anna's proposal seeks to keep the municipal and library half at 3% or reduce it, or keep it at 3% and any excess be distributed to the school side of operating. If I summarize that in brief, that's the summary. And my motion, when I make it, and then I can explain. when I make it, and then I can explain why I'm making it, but I figured I'd explain what the motion does, since it sounds weird, is to keep, in all those places where it says municipal and library, in those portions, and then says Amherst Schools and Regional Schools, I move the library from the municipal and library side to the school side so that municipal would stay at 3 and library and schools would be going up. So that's, that's what the words mean when I read this motion. And I have specific reasons I'm making the motion, but I'm not supposed to speak to those reasons until it gets a second. So I'm trying to abide by that. But, but I'll make the motion, hopefully it will get a second. So it's moved to amend as follows. On Page 2, in the first amended paragraph, add "library" before Amherst Pelham Regional and before Amherst Regional. On Page 4, third paragraph in Section 4, expense projections, add "library" before both references to Regional and delete "and libraries" after municipal. And on Page 4, the last bulleted paragraph, delete "and library branches" after "municipal services" and add "library" before both instances of Amherst Pelham Regional.
I'd like the clerk to please put this up on the screen, and let's review them one by one. Pass the clerk to put it on the screen.
One on Page 2 and two on Page 4.
May I second that motion?
Thank you.
May I speak to it?
Yes, please speak to it. And then we'll-
So-
Then we'll go back and look-
There are four operating, large operating sides of the budget. The, the elementary school, the regional schools, the library, and the municipal side. Three of those four need to present to the manager by April 1. Today is still March 24th. Their budgets. I haven't been following the library closely on their votes, but they may have already voted their budget. I'm not sure. We really only deal with the needs of the, of any of the four once we see the budget in May. And the libraries, as well as the schools, have known for a month now that the guidance, as it stands, is 4%, not 3%. When the budget comes to us as a council, the schools have a general law that allows us to increase their number on request of the schools, from whatever the manager might propose. The libraries do not have that same allowance. The libraries, just like the municipal side, can only be reduced from what the manager proposes under state law and our charter. There is no exception to that. And so my thinking at this point is, because we have not, the only thing we've heard from the libraries about their budget is theirs is just as bad and it's in deficit. And we've heard that at BCG. I'm not saying we shouldn't think about a lower number for the library. I'm saying it's premature to, and we need to leave the option open. And so we should leave that number at the 4% that we've given them the guidance for now. When the budget comes to us in May, we can propose potentially, when we've asked them what their budget looks like and we've seen where all the other operating budgets are, we can potentially reduce that number if we're thinking about adding numbers to other, to the schools at that point. Because we have the ability to add to the schools and we have to reduce some other line to do that legally. But we could not, if when the library came to us in May at a 3% and they said, "We just can't do it on that and we're firing X number of people because we can't do it," we have no ability to, to rectify that, none. Because we cannot increase their number. So I see this as, as controlling the municipal side of sort of where we want that guideline to be and then leaving the guidelines at a minimum sort of where they were before tonight for the other town, other three parts of the operating budget and leaving us some options for the library that might still achieve what Anna was going for on the library side later, but not doing it at a point when we haven't had any discussions with the library elected trustees about their budget, the constraints they have, and all of that. We just haven't. And so I think it would, I, I cannot support something that reduces their line. It's $23,000 out of a $90,000, $90,000, 4% increase that you're trying to reduce by $23,000 with what it was originally drafted. So I, I want to put the library in with the schools as, if we keep the town at 3%, they also get some above 3% with this amendment.
Can you show us the various places that Counsel Hanke is suggesting? Athena?
So it was the first amended paragraph on Page 2. So it was that blue, that, I didn't know how to define that bullet point there. It would be distribute remaining funds to the library, comma, Amherst Pelham Regional and Amherst Elementary Schools unless remaining is more than total year-over-year increase to the library, Amherst Regional and Amherst Elementary School, at which point consult the finance and budget coordinating. So it would be adding the word "library" to those two groups in that paragraph. And then on Page 4, in the third paragraph of Section 4, is that where we are? It would be, given the current challenges facing our library, regional, and elementary schools, we recommend dividing up increases to each area differently with 3% being allocated to municipal services and the remainder being allocated to the library, regional, and elementary schools in that one. And then the last bullet right down would basically read the same thing. In 3% increase to municipal services, but not library branches, and then distribute remaining to library, Amherst Pelham Regional, and Amherst Elementary School.
Pam Rooney? Okay. Mandy? Counsel Hanke, did you have anything else? Counsel Ryan?
So this, this isn't a very large amount, but I think, given what the library does, given the, the community it serves, given the services it provides, I think it should be excluded from this. I understand and accept the, the decrease from 4% to 3% for the general fund. But I think the library, really, from an equity point of view, from just a, an education point of view, from the job that it does, while this isn't a large amount, we should respect that. And so I hope that we would agree to, at least at this point, not decrease their amount. And it would have a small effect on the overall impact that Anna's seeking, but it really isn't that much. And I think it's an important symbolic act.
Andy?
Yeah, I hate to do this, but I'm going to actually, under Rule 7.1, make a motion to adjourn. I feel like we cannot continue to be productive. And Rule 3.2 says that meetings aim to end by 10:00 PM.
Sorry, Andy, can you press your mic? Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Is there any further discussion?
It's not debatable.
It's not debatable, thank you. We begin with Kathy Shane.
Can I, can I just get, does that mean we continue this discussion at the next council meeting? It doesn't go to finance?
It means we continue-
So I just need to take it, it's on the finance agenda for tomorrow, so I'm taking it off the finance agenda.
We continue to discuss it on the 7th.
Okay, and I guess I am tired, so I'll say yes. But I will also say I'm not going to be at the next council meeting. So I apologize.
Okay. Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
No.
Alicia?
No.
Pat?
Aye.
Anna?
No.
Counsel Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Counsel Hanke?
No.
Bob Hegner?
Yes.
Counsel Lord?
No.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
George Ryan?
No.
We continue the discussion.
That was a 7-6 vote that passed.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that motion passed, it was 7-6. No, it's a majority.
And how many said yes?
Seven.
Oh, you're right. I'll switch my vote to a no.
No, you can't do that. No, we- You know, I don't have that same, I have six ayes and seven nays.
I've had seven six, seven ayes, six nays.
And DeAngelo's was an aye. Ette was an aye. Griesmer was an aye. Hegner was an aye. Shane was an aye. Steinberg was an aye.
Pam Rooney was an aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam Rooney was an aye. You're right. Okay, we continue the conversation on the 7th.